We're ready to start. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting. Today's the 13th of July, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to welcome John and Joy to our -- I mean, John, you came last time, but this is our first full Select Board meeting, so looking forward to working with everybody.
Likewise.
Great, and welcome home.
Thank you very much.
That's nice. Any announcements or anything before we start?
Not in particular.
No? Okay. Then we will just jump right into the agenda. There are no hearings and there are no presentations. I just wanted to, especially, John and Joy, just let you know that, you know, we're used to looking at revenue reports and expense reports and warrants and things like that, so if you have any question, like, once ever...
One each.
What do you mean, one each? Oh, take one at a time. Then feel free to, like, stop and ask a lot of questions. Let's see, this is a better copy. Okay, yeah, oh, good. So feel free, at any point, to just go ahead and stop. So first is the election of the Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. So Chair works with Ed, sets the agenda of the meeting, primarily handles the correspondence that comes in from various people who've had difficulties in the past with everybody jumping in to respond to something that happens, and that's not necessary nor is it very productive, so the Chair usually is the person that does the correspondence unless delegates to somebody else to do it because it's their expertise or their committee or their whatever. And obviously oversees the meetings. Vice Chair subs in when the Chair isn't available to run the meeting. And the Clerk is the person that signs a lot of the documents, and it's separate from the person who actually is signing the warrants. We usually have a person and a backup person to actually sign the warrants. So with that, I'll start by entertaining nomination for Chair.
All right.
I've never done that. Now we're official.
Can I ask a question, Maureen? Do you want to continue another year as Chair?
I would like to pass the baton, actually. I would like to pass the baton.
And Francine, you were Vice Chair. Do you want to step up?
I really...
See how this is going? Any interest, Chris?
I was going to nominate Chris Fowles, actually.
I was, yes. And I'll second. Oh, that's an actual real nomination, huh? Chris?
I won't refuse.
Okay. Would you like me to do tonight's meeting, or would you like to just step right into it if you're voting?
No, I'd actually prefer to finish tonight's meeting, actually.
I'm happy to.
Give me a breath.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We need to vote on it.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Okay, then we have nomination for Chris Fowles. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I will help all, if I can.
Thank you, guys. We'll hopefully continue the collegiality and leadership that you've provided, reading for the last couple of years, so I really know that I've got some shoes to fill here, so I will look forward to your guidance as well.
Absolutely. We're a team here. Okay, so Vice Chair, do you want to say anything about? I mean, you stepped in for a few of the meetings.
Right, yeah.
So basically, that's the major role, is really just...
Yeah, just substituting and running the meeting in the absence of the Chair. And it's pretty straightforward with the agenda and the materials. Ed briefs me during the day of the meeting, just so that we're on the same page in terms of the agenda items and so forth. So I think it went fairly well.
Would someone like to offer nomination for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Francine Tishman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are you able to accept that?
I was, I wanted to nominate someone as well.
Okay, so is there a second to that? Okay, so is there a second nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate John Lumbras, if you're available.
Sure.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
So now we're going to vote?
Are you declaring the nomination in favor of nominating John?
I would like, and the only reason that I am is simply because I served as the Clerk, as did Chris, and someone who is not employed and available during the day to run up here to sign things at odd times and be, you know, kind of instantaneously available would be my reason, so my, I would express an interest in becoming the Clerk, which I was in the past.
Okay, all right, then you're going to defer the nomination if you'd like, and John's willing to accept. Did we get a second for John?
I didn't.
Yep, okay, good. All right, so all in favor?
Of John Lumbras as the Vice Chair.
Aye. Thank you very much, John. And lastly, on the appointments, would be Clerk, and that is separate from signing the actual warrants, but it's signing additional paperwork, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Signing the minutes and other items, but it is separate from the, either the payroll or the vendor warrant.
Okay. So a nomination for Clerk, then.
I'll nominate Joy Piper.
Okay. Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Second? You willing to accept that?
Sure.
Okay, great. Any other nominations? All those in favor, then?
Aye.
Joy, aye? Aye. Great, thank you very much. And now we'll talk about the warrants. So the warrants are on a regular basis? How often? How many times a week? One, two, three?
Once a week, but maybe three times a day.
Right.
If today's any indication.
Yeah.
I mean, I just left here a few minutes ago, actually.
This really relies on people being available to sign things pretty quickly and...
Seriously, it's oftentimes, it's every week, but it's sometimes twice.
Okay, and it's helpful to have a primary signer and then a secondary person and a backup, because these, this is an usually urgent thing that needs to be done, for sure. So is there a nomination, either self or otherwise, of somebody who's willing to be signer of warrants?
In order, are we skipping ahead to 5.2?
Oh, where are we?
Looks like we've got at least one thing.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Yeah, people okay with that, because that's kind of like the, or would you rather the committee assignments, too?
We can do the committee assignments. We'll stay in order. It's a good idea. Thank you for reminding me. Just so you know, the joint meeting with the Parks Commission is not going to happen because they did not post a meeting. So we're not able to do that appointment, and it'll have to be on the agenda for the next Select Board meeting, okay? So, yeah, let's go ahead right into liaison assignments. And the document that I sent out has the frequency of the, how often the committees meet. I just want to say a couple of things about this. So first of all, when I first joined the Select Board, there was really bad attendance on the Select Board, and there were a couple of people that didn't show up very often. And so the three people that did had to contact each other every meeting and say, "Are you coming? Are you coming?", so there'd be a quorum. And, you know, I think that the boards that I've been on since have been really, really, like, really good attendance, and, you know, one here, one there, but they also, there was no liaison, or the liaison assignments were really not as formalized. And in fact, there were liaison assignments to department heads, so there was a Select Board person who was a liaison to the Fire Department, Police Department, and I think it was because that was what the Select Board interest of the members were. I don't know the history of it, but I know that there were, you know, previous firefighters or whatever. We decided not to have liaisons to department heads because they report to Ed, and it's kind of undermining his leadership, you know, as he reports to us. So we decided not to have liaison to department heads. So then we ended up looking at all the committees and decided, do they need to have a liaison assignment? And so that's part of what we really should decide tonight before we say, "Well, let's do this, that, and whatever." The other thing, too, is, you know, our Select Board meetings can go very long, as Tammy can verify, and, you know, we have quarterly updates from, you know, police-fire dispatchers, we have the finance group, we have the senior center, Health Department, and we want to make sure that happens, because we learn a tremendous amount about, from the police and highway and everything else. So we just want to be careful that we don't have, like, five-hour meetings and spend, like, lengthy updates from committees, because, to be honest with you, there's agendas, there's minutes, there's also videos. We just want to make sure that we have good communication between the committees and the Select Board, and that's the main purpose of it. So if you aren't able to go to a particular committee meeting, then I usually try to reach out to the Chair before the Select Board meeting and just say, you know, "The things that you want me to report..." A lot of times I do go to the meetings, but I just want to be clear that it's a lot every other week: volunteers, Select Board, and there's also a lot of liaison assignments. So I just wanted to start by reviewing the list and decide whether or not all the different committees should have a liaison assignment. And with that, I just want to review... All right, so this is the current list of boards and commissions, so you'll know that some of these don't have liaison assignments. Agriculture Committee, Almanors, Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Board of Registars, Bylaws, Capital Improvement, Cemetery Commission, Community Preservation, Conservation Commission, Cultural Commission. We used to have an Energy Committee, not currently. Greenway Committee, that's just getting back going again. Historical Committee, Housing Authority, Park Commission, PQB, or Personal Policies and Procedure Board, Planning Board, Public Safety Complex Committee, Recreation Needs Committee, which is also not current, Water Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. So it just seems like a logical time to kind of look at the list of committees and decide whether or not there should be additional ones. With that, I just want you to know that Jim Senney, who's the Housing Authority Committee, contacted me and said, "We would really like to have a Select Board person represented with Housing, because we are going forward with a housing trust for the town." And I said that I would bring it to the Select Board. I couldn't decide on my own, but I would bring it to the Select Board for consideration. So I did add them to the list for us to talk about. So... Well, following up on that, I think the Housing Authority would be good to have a liaison, too, partly also because they're updating their housing production plan right now, too, through that grant with DOTA. So I think the more that somebody from Select Board is involved in knowing what's going on, I mean, it's not a non, it's a non-voting position, but to be a liaison to it, I think somebody, it would be good to add Housing to the current list, I think.
Okay, so the liaison assignments that I have that meet every two weeks are Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, Finance Committee, Planning Board, and Ad-Hoc Technology Committee. Ad-Hoc Technology Committee and the Grants Committee are new committees in the past year that have been very busy and very productive. Is it true that all of them work, meet twice a month? And do people feel like it would be helpful, useful, to have a liaison to all of those committees? Assessors is still necessary and important?
I think so, just to keep in touch, especially with some changes happening there.
Okay.
And the Tech Committee is, you know, in the process of moving forward and maybe have some, you know, branching out into other things with the future broadband ideas. Grant Committee has been meeting every, we're scheduled every two weeks in the afternoons, actually Wednesday afternoons at 2:30, but when a grant is on the table and due, we've been meeting weekly.
All right, I'm moving that up to every two weeks, then, in my little list. And then the ones, so everyone's in agreement that we should have liaisons to all those committees, and we can talk about who wants to be a liaison to those. Then the ones that are generally monthly, Board of Health, COA, Community Preservation, that might be less than monthly, but basically, Norris School, Hampshire Regional, Open Space Committee, and Personal Policies and Procedure Board. And three of these committees are voting memberships: Community Preservation, Open Space Committee, and Personal Policies and Procedure Board. As part of their bylaws are that there's a Select Board member who's a voting member. Seems logical that...
Question, is Capital Committee also a voting member?
Yes. That's, I'm going by how often they meet, so it's that, that's the next, yeah. I'm looking at the one that I sent out, that it goes by how often they meet. You're right, that's the last one that actually has voting member, Capital, and that's as needed. So people in general agreement that Board of Health, COA, CPC, the schools, obviously, definitely, Open Space Committee and PQB, all should have liaison? Yeah. Okay, and then the last group is intermittent. They'd meet as needed. Capital Committee usually right before town meeting to review capital requests. Greenway Committee is getting started again, because the number-one priority in town, as it appears, is the Greenway Master Plan Implementation Committee. Chris can give us a little bit of an update, I know Francine can, too, on what the status of that committee is. Public Safety Building Committee, we really want to get that committee meeting again. ZBA meets only as needed, and then the Housing Authority I added. Okay, so we're going to, we want to keep with this list? Anybody have any suggestions for adding or deleting?
And let me just remind you, as far as the Capital Committee goes, there's no requirement for a Select Board member to actually be the voting member, but the last, I think, shall we say, two terms it has been. You could have a Select Board liaison and appoint someone outside the Select Board to that committee.
What do you mean?
There's no requirement by bylaw or anything else that a Select Board member be appointed to that committee.
Really?
Yes.
We just happened to do that. But the bylaws have a voting membership?
It's just the last two terms it has been a Select Board member that this Select Board has appointed to that, but it is not a requirement.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I think it's really good that we have a member on that committee, because that's, you know, a lot of things go on at town meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the only other one, it's not really a formal committee, but we have the informal Old Town Hall working group.
Yeah.
So I'm on that one. That has been very intimate, and we're, it's not really a standing committee.
That's an ad hoc group that came out of, they had a...
It's a working group, it's not really...
...amendment study of the Old Town Hall with a lot of good recommendations, and I think this small group is looking at what may be put forward for beginning to fix it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have one question. Is there public safety building committees?
Well, there is, and they haven't met for a while. It's really been in place for a very long time, to be honest with you. There've been many iterations of it. I think there's a general sense right now that it should get resurrected. You know, first it was like, "Let's build a public safety complex." There was something that went to town meeting for it to be over there. Huge price tag, voted down. Then it was, "Let's renovate the two buildings", and then it swings back to, "Let's have a new public safety complex." So I think that we, I think the public wants to keep that on the radar, especially with the other towns nearby, all voting in favor of Williamsburg and West Hampton, so...
But currently, there's no committee for them.
Well, currently, there's a list of people that are on the committee, but they'd have to be, like, contacted to say, "Okay, are you on it?"
Yeah, they just haven't met in quite a while.
But I think that, one of my hopes with this new group is that we would plan, or whoever's the liaison to that committee would, maybe with Ed's help, just try to, you know, obviously, Police Chief, Fire Chief are on the committee, but to really resurrect the committee again and see what we can do now that we have this incredibly productive Grants Committee. Yeah, so anyway, we, it's definitely, we want a liaison, and definitely it's a committee, and there are members, but we have to resurrect whether they still want to be on that committee.
And I really do think we should resurrect the Greenway Committee, or it, too. I mean, it's maybe resurrecting itself. I understand they have a new Chair in the Greenway Committee.
Yeah, everyone's been, everyone has been pretty proactive, I think, so...
So I think they'll be scheduling meetings sometime soon, so I think that'll be good to know what's going on, and especially, you know, because we've got, you know, the grant emphasis has been a bit toward that. It would be good to at least have an ear to the ground, but whether that has to be a regular attendance, it could be sporadic one, I suppose.
Okay, so with that, there are 19 committees listed here, and again, there's some that meet pretty often. So what is, and just maybe, John and Joy, what is your interest, expertise, or I'll start with what you would, might like to do. And John, are you staying on as Chair of this local school committee?
Correct.
Okay. So it might just make sense for you to certainly be the liaison. What would you be interested in in particular?
I mean, I was on Conservation Commission for many years, so that's something that I feel very comfortable. You know, I understand their goals and what they've been doing for the past four years, so that's something I'm interested in. I'd also be interested in the Housing Authority and getting the housing trust that's being created and getting that going. Planning Board, Open Space Committee, I think those all kind of coincide with Conservation Commission and Housing Authority, kind of all cohesively, and I would be interested in having my ear on those.
Okay, so Conservation, Housing, what's the other one?
Planning Board and Open Space. But I, as I'm just saying things, I'm not looking at the schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know I can do Conservation Commission, Open Space Committee, I'm pretty available.
Yeah, we'll just throw it, and then we'll sift it down based on what other people's... Sometimes people are like, "Well, it makes sense to cluster these ones together, like Open Space, Conservation, Community Preservation." You know, I think it's really whatever people are comfortable with or interested in, so...
Are you actually on the Community Preservation now?
Yeah, I am, I was as a rep for Conservation Commission.
Right.
Yes, which I'm not on anymore, so...
Right, so you won't be the liaison there.
She's going to stay on Community Preservation also?
No, she was a liaison from Conservation Commission.
Understood, okay.
How about you, John? What interests you, other than Norris?
Well...
I mean, I was speaking for you. Is that one that you would, would that make sense? I mean, do you want to do that?
Well, I was wondering if it would make more sense, when, so when I'm over on the Norris side, I'm representing Norris and not the Select Board capacity.
Oh, not to wear two hats on that, okay.
But I'm not opposed to that. I mean, temporarily, I'm also the Hampshire Regional voting member from Norris with the resignation of Greg.
Okay.
So I don't know how long I want to do those two things, but the, I mean, my strengths are finance, so wherever...
So probably Capital and Finance for a couple of them?
That'd be fine, I mean, yeah, I guess I would say it this way. If Francine was interested in not doing the PPP, then I would be interested in that, but I would yield if she wanted to stay with it as an option. But, yeah, the Capital Committee, Finance Committee...
And PQB?
Those would all be fine.
What do you say, Francine?
No, that's fine with me, yes.
Okay.
Then I might suggest with that load, John, we split up the two schools?
Yeah.
So that both, that you don't have both schools, if that makes any sense?
I think what he's saying is he might prefer somebody else do the schools?
Well, if somebody could take Norris, because I intend to stay on his Chair.
Oh, I see, yes.
So when I'm up at Regional, I'm just the appointee from the board.
Yeah, why don't we...
So if someone could take Norris, that'd be great.
All right, we'll put Hampshire. Okay, and Francine or Chris?
I will, you know, I would be interested in Norris and the Board of Health.
All right, let me just, I'm marking these in different colors, so hang on.
You can all these...
Norris and Board of Health?
Board of Health. Chris has Master Plan. There's no reason for two of us to be on, and she's been Chair, so... Did some, Joy has Planning?
She mentioned Planning, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I would do, I could do Public Safety, I guess.
Yeah, you had actually expressed an interest in that a while ago when... Or... A meeting?
The Board of Health, Norris, Public Safety.
Okay. And Chris?
All right. I think I would like to hang on to both Master Plan and the Grants Committee.
All right, hang on, Master Plan.
And, I mean, those take up a fair amount of time. Technology Committee, I'd like to stay on. It's not taking up a lot of my time. So I'd probably give up the Board of Assessors on that.
Anything else?
No, I think that would fill me up. I'm actually on the Bylaws Committee itself as a member, so that takes up a different level of time, but...
Okay, so I would very much like to stay on the Council on Aging.
Reenie?
Yeah.
One point of clarification on Chris is, she is actually appointed to the Grants Committee through either, I think it's November of '21 or November of '22, so it's not a liaison, but she is currently appointed to that.
That is a point. So I'd have to be reappointed rather than a Select Board liaison?
But that doesn't come up until later, so, yeah.
Later, okay.
So you become a perfect liaison because you're appointed to it, so...
Okay. All right. So Reenie, you were saying COA?
Yeah, I'll do COA, and if nobody else is interested in the Board of Assessors, I'll take that as my couple of times a month committee.
How about...
And I'm happy to do...
Planning Board and Open Space?
Planning Board, I think she, Joy, expressed an interest in. I'm happy to do Community Preservation. I was a liaison to that before from something, Conservation, I think, or something. Okay, so...
And Open Space? Did you say that?
Joy expressed an interest in Open Space, so the only thing that's left, let's see...
We're getting a little unbalanced, I'm afraid.
Yeah.
You're getting unbalanced?
Yeah.
Okay, let me just read them, and then you can tell me if I got this right. So Joy, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Open Space, and Housing.
Yes.
John, Finance Committee, Hampshire Regional, PQB, and Capital.
Yep.
Francine... I can't recall who you are, Francine. Green. Finance Committee, no, actually, no. Guy blew. Board of Health, Norris School, Public Safety Committee.
Right.
And Chris, Ad-Hoc Technology, Ad-Hoc Grants, Master Plan. And myself, Board of Assessors, Council on Aging, Community Preservation. And so there are two left. One is Greenway, and one is ZBA.
I've done the ZBA, and they have, like, two or three meetings a year. It's very sporadic. I mean, it's not a burden, I would, unless someone else wants it, I'll be happy to continue.
Okay.
Any thoughts on when the Greenway is going to meet?
You know, there's...
It sounds like it's going to get more active, but right now it's just...
Oh, absolutely, I think it's going to get more active.
Every Sunday morning, or...
Does anybody know?
They haven't met in about the last year. I know they're intending to start meeting again, but I don't know on what evenings, or if they will even have a set schedule of the same evening.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have a problem starting with it, just if it gets to be too much, maybe somebody else can jump in later on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at, like, Joy, yours seems to be on the heavier side. You have two committees that meet twice a month, and then Open Space is once a month, and then, I guess, Housing, I'm not sure how often they're going to meet.
Once a month, in general, for Housing.
Chris, I think you're on for two committees that meet twice a month, and then Master Francine, you have a couple that are once a month, and then Public Safety. Francine, you have a couple that are once a month, and then Public Women. I keep thinking, okay, you're Green. You have Hampshire Regional, PQB.
That's me.
No, that's, okay, Norris. Your Board of Health, Norris School, and.
Public Safety.
Public Safety Committee and ZBA.
Yep.
Okay. So John, that gives you a good amount there between being chair of the local school committee. So I mean, if you're sure about that, if you want to share Greenway, we can do that.
I can start with it, but.
Okay.
I'd be willing to pick it up if you want. I mean, just because I've been involved in working on the grant for that, too, so, either way.
Okay. All right, well, I'll send this to you, Ed, if you want. It's color-coded, if you're not colorblind or anything. Let me just make sure I get this one.
You'll remember all this?
It's green. Okay, everybody good on them? Do you want me to read them again, or everybody's got them all?
I have them.
Good?
I'm good.
You're good? Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
I think so. I can just send them out to everybody. Yeah, thanks, everybody, again. We'll just do quick updates. You know, the purpose of this is to have good communication with the other committees and to support the other committees, too, in all these volunteer efforts in town. But again, it's a lot of meetings, so, all right, that's that.
Could you do me a favor, please? And you're gonna have to separate them out into two pieces.
What do you mean?
Motion and a vote for the liaison assignments, and then separately, a motion and a vote for those assignments being elected to committees with voting rights.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the liaison assignments? So moved.
Second.
Joy, John. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Would someone like to make a motion for the voting rights for the four committees that we mentioned here? Community Preservation, Open Space, PQB, and Capital?
So moved.
John?
I'll second.
And Chris, second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does that meet your requirement there?
It absolutely does, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, thanks, everybody. Moving on then to Select Board Members to be the primary authorized signer of the warrants, primary one, and backup person. Would someone like to make a motion to appoint somebody?
I'll make the appointment Francine to be primary and Chris to be second.
Okay, Francine, then Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll let Joy second since you're the nominees. Are you both willing and accepting?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get all that?
Got it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to talk about appointments to committees. We have some standard sort of reappointments. First of all, we have the resignation, unfortunately, of Martha Lamy, Principal Assessor effective August 5th, 2021. Just want to take this opportunity to thank her for all of her wonderful service to our town. And so we have resignation of Martha Lamy. We have appointment of Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent, reappointment to expire June 30th, 2024. Stephen Crowley, Agricultural Commission, reappointment term to expire June 30th, 2024. Christine Fowles, Master Plan, reappointment term to expire June 30th, 2024. And Christina Mattson, Historical Commission, reappointment term to expire 6/30, 2024. Can I have a motion to approve these? I move to approve these appointments. Okay, Francine, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Chris, any comments, questions? All in favor?
I can say it. Clarification.
Yeah.
So I understand pretty much everything on here except for the, the bottom three, the Agricultural Commission, Master Plan, and Historical, those are just, those are non-compensated positions.
Correct, they're volunteer committees, yep.
The Highway Superintendent is a compensated position. So is there an employment contract?
Yeah, you know, that's.
There is not.
There's not, yeah.
So minimum wage? I mean.
Yes, minimum wage. No, it's, as an employee at will. This is not one of the statutory positions that would allow for a multiple-year contract. So if the one was done, it would have to be 20.
I guess, given all the history in town recently, how, where does that particular position, where do their compensation packages get reviewed? Is that at the PQB level? Is that at the Select Board level?
Both the PPP and the Select Board level. It's an employee at will.
Was that, was that?
What's that?
So it's an hourly position?
No, this would be a salaried position for what the budget approved is. Much like at the last meeting, we did the, let's see, Building Commissioner, the, which is a salaried position. We also did the alternate inspectors.
Correct, but those were one-year appointments.
Correct.
So I guess this is where my question comes in. This is a three-year.
Right.
Appointment, which I'm not opposed to.
Yeah.
But as far as, unless I'm wrong in misunderstanding something, compensation has only been determined for one year.
Correct.
And then it gets renegotiated in the second year?
Well, it's not, it's not a contract, so it's not negotiated.
Can you explain what you were talking about, the statutory requirement?
Yes, there, and I'm sure Mr. Lumbar's aware of this, but there are certain statutory or positions that are spelled out in the statutes, Town Administrator, Town Accountant, if it was an appointed, you know, Treasurer or Collector, that says they are three-year appointments, and you can do three-year contracts for them. Like I say, Highway Superintendent is not one of them. DPW Director would be.
So maybe that's where the confusion comes on my part.
Yes.
Is there anything in the statute that prevents us from?
About what?
Does, is there anything in the statute that prevents us from offering some sort to secure an employee for a longer period than year-to-year?
No, it just depends on if it's more advantageous to that employee to be an employee at will or have the one-year contract. Because it's not a statutory position for a multiple year. It means you can basically set the salary to it, but you are not, or we are not able to establish any benefits outside of those that are established through the PPP, the rules and regulations.
Gotcha, okay. I'm all set.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor of approving these appointments and resignations? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Ed, we're gonna start with a new thing, if you're ready. We're going to actually have your Town Administrator report first before the Select Board reports. You're okay with that? And is, do we have a copy of it in here?
What's that? No, there is not.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't have much outside of what the, is in the agenda. I will let you know that, let's see, grant-wise, and the Grant Committee, the Grant Report hasn't been done as of yet, but we did receive the grant for funding of the sidewalk in front of the cemetery on Route 10. We got notification of that last week, so Randall and I are currently working with StanTech on moving that forward so it can be done before the end of December of this year.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
About $126,000, I think, or something like that.
Sounds.
$124,000, $126,000, $24,000, maybe.
And it was funded by whom?
It's funded by a program called Shared Streets and Spaces. So Mass, it's connected to Mass DOT, essentially.
And this will be a sidewalk that goes from Palmary Meadow Road to High Street, so pretty much in front of the cemetery?
Correct.
Is it gonna be a wide one like the one that's on Route 10 in front of, like, Paisanos and?
No.
No?
It's about a five foot.
Five foot wide.
So a more traditional sidewalk?
Correct.
Excellent.
So that will connect our walking spaces in town for that missing link.
Yeah.
And we had, luckily with the grant, it was a quick grant application that came up, and we were able, through the grant process, the program itself, DOT, provided some technical assistance through a different avenue, which we've never had. So the folks from StanTech became RTA, and they joined in and did the drawings and everything we needed in record time. I mean, just totally record time. And we were fortunate to get it, so, yeah. And I think we actually get bonus points if we get it done by the end of September.
Really?
Oh, yeah, by the end of December.
Bonus points, meaning money? Meaning money?
Well, I think we said that we were going to try for the end of September, but it has to be done by the end of December, no matter what.
Wow, that's wonderful.
And that's about all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Ed? I have a question, and it might be on the agenda, so I'll see if it is and then go back to it. Can you give us an update on the audit? I don't see that on the agenda.
Sure.
I know there was a, there was an email about that.
Yeah, Melanson's currently working on that. We have been delayed by the COVID-19 pandemic, but they are currently working with us. They have remote access to get in and take a look at our files to complete that audit.
And there are no concerns in terms of the bonding and Moody's and all that?
I'll reach out and contact them about this, but I know from talking with Melanson that there are a number of towns across Massachusetts this year that are behind with their audits.
Okay. And.
Do we have any kind of an estimated date when they might finish the audit, the draft report?
I'm hoping that will be just about completed by the end of July.
In here.
The, so, past practice, is it, when they're done and the draft is released, normally it goes to the individuals within the Town Hall. Will the Select Board get it simultaneously at the same time?
Yes, in fact, we'll get a preliminary draft report first.
And our contract with Melanson is a three-year contract, which actually ends with this audit. So I think we'll have a discussion when it comes up to the accountant discussion about what we're gonna be doing about that.
And then just one more question. Traditionally, has Melanson, he's come in and presented the audit to the Select Board, or is it merely just following the report?
I've only seen a written report.
Just follow the report?
Written report, yeah.
Correct. And I meant to check on the contract. For some reason, I thought it was through fiscal year '21, but I could be wrong.
When I talked to Tanya, she said at the conclusion of this audit, our contract was completed. I thought the same thing.
If you can check that.
Yeah, I meant to today, and I did not get to it.
I have a feeling that.
She looked, she, I thought she was looking at the contract as we were on the phone. That's how she responded to me, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And it could be just the fact that the audit's one year behind, so it probably was in 2019 that we renewed the contract. It's just a quick, and that would have been for fiscal year '18, but I will double-check on it just to make sure. Because, like I say, I had it in my mindset that it went through the audit of fiscal year '21.
Yeah, it does seem like it's pretty soon, but time flies, too.
Well, I was gonna say, after these last 15 months, time seems to be flying even faster, so.
Yeah. Well, and I would hope, too, that, you know, if we have an issue with our bonding, that they will at least, or at least the auditor might put in a word about why they've also been delayed. I mean, if that's, you know, some of their issue, too, in terms of having access to files, et cetera, because I don't think we should be totally penalized by somebody else's work that we can't control either.
Sure.
Any other questions for Ed? Okay, Select Board reports. Would anybody like to start?
Oh, I'll start, sure. The PQB met on July 1st. Most of the items that were discussed at that meeting appears on tonight's agenda that we'll get into later, so I'm not gonna go into any detail right now. There were a couple of questions that arose during the meeting that I'm searching for answers, and one being whether or not the Classification and Compensation Report presented to the Select Board in February of 2020 and adopted by the Select Board in May 2021 requires a public hearing, and if so, we will have to go back and do that. The other question was whether the PQB vote to change employee status from non-exempt to exempt has to come before the Select Board. That's a question I have. In this instance, all department heads have been designated as exempt employees with the exception of the Health Director.
Do you know why?
I don't, and that's why I'm trying to, it's a question that I have, those two.
And some of the new designations, the exempt status is recent?
Yes. Three, three were voted on, that were moved from non-exempt to exempt. That was the Director of Council on Aging, the Library Director, and the Principal Assessor. And if you look back on their, how the positions were scored, they all fell within the exempt category based on points.
Okay.
Okay. So that was something that I guess had been missing for however long. All right, just to bring people up to date on the PVC, PVPC, small grant award that we received on regional HR exploration study. I had a call today from their project person, Eric Weiss, and they're ready to get the group together. He's trying to coordinate a meeting at which he's asked that Ed be there, and I'm thinking, perhaps, maybe John should take it. I'd be willing to continue on it since I was part of the initial group, but since John's doing the PQB, whether or not that's something would be more appropriate for him. But anyway, he's trying to organize a meeting, and we can discuss this later. I can give you his contact information, and I'll give him yours if that's how we decide to go. But they will have an initial meeting scheduled the week of July 26th.
Can remind us of the towns, Francine? Do you know? Do you remember the towns that are?
The only town that they've mentioned is West Hampton.
Really?
And then they say other towns, but they don't identify the other towns. I was under the assumption that there would be several of us, and maybe there will be, but so far, all I've seen is West Hampton.
For some reason, I thought Chester had been involved, or Chester or Chesterfield, one or the other.
Right, it was mentioned to me when we submitted the application.
Right, yeah.
But I haven't seen their name since, since that time.
Okay.
All right. And then finally, another couple things. The Bylaws Committee, we've had a few cancellations. We're now scheduled to meet on Thursday, July 15th, at 10:30 at Conant Park. CPC has had, so, I know plans to have a meeting yet this summer, but nothing has been scheduled. And the ZBA has not met since May, and as you know, they only meet on an as-needed basis, so, so far, so good. And that's it for me, thank you.
Okay, I'll go next. I think, just starting off with the Board of Assessors, I was at their meeting last night, and I had known about the resignation, Martha's resignation. And I would just also like to send out my thank yous to Martha for a great job. I think she's been a good example of wonderful community service and customer service. She's certainly a friendly face in Town Hall. We've heard a lot of feedback from residents that appreciate her, her ability to dig into the files and find the answers to things when she's, you know, needing to give them some specific information. So we're gonna miss her, but she's got an opportunity for a much better position that we cannot even begin to match. So the Board of Assessors has put out a recruiting announcement on the Assessors, Municipal Assessors Association website, et cetera. So they will be starting the recruiting process. Ad hoc technology meetings are still happening. They're still hoping to come down, I guess, whenever there will be the next, I don't know if you've checked in with David or Mike Yeager, about coming down and having a chat with the folks that have received their laptops. I know there's still seven or eight laptops still to deploy, and they might wait until they're all deployed, but they wanted to get a sense of people's reaction, reaction, working ability with the laptops, what's going well, what's not going well, what improvements are they seeing with the, with the new laptop. So at some point, I think they still wanna do that. And they're looking at voice-over IP phone issues, and so they're, they're still very actively involved.
Yeah, actually, actually, Mike Yeager and Dave Rooks were in earlier this evening or later this afternoon. I gave them a tour of the server room downstairs, so.
Very good, yeah. The Grants Committee has been very busy. The Grants Committee has been very busy, and a huge thank you to all the people on the Grants Committee. We've, you've heard about the one grant we got from the Shared Streets and Spaces. We just put in another application at the request of the Park Commission, and this is to the Park Grant Program, which is a very heavy-duty state program. It's, it's got a lot of requirements, and we pulled together the best we can and put in a request basically to create a walkable path, an ADA accessible path from Route 10 in, toward, in past the tennis courts and the future pickleball courts, down toward the library parking lot. So just a first phase of a path. A second phase eventually would be going from the parking lot to the left of the pavilion over to Clark Street, because we know at some point in time, they would like to replace some of the very dilapidated playground equipment. But in talking to folks at the state, the advice was, you know, don't, don't even bother with those kinds of things unless you've got an accessible park, more accessible than it is. So that is a piece of it. And then also, a portion of the grant request is for a small splash pad down, again, somewhere toward the library parking lot pavilion area. So that grant has gone into the park program as of yesterday, and we won't know for probably about four, five, four or five months on that one. So that was a request of the Park Commission as they look at trying to improve the facilities down at Conant Park. And so right now, we're not going to meet probably for another week until we figure out what's coming up. I know the, one of the big ones coming up probably will be this, both the Brick Grant, which I think, Renee, you had mentioned, that would help us to do some updating of our hazard mitigation plan, as well as the Community Compact Grant, IT Grant, maybe. Both of these are kind of coming up in the fall, so we'll keep an eye on the radar and see when the announcements are for any webinars or any, anything there. CONCOM?
Can I just ask before we move on, on the grants thing, did you already announce about the Trail of Ramon?
It's not, yeah. It has not been, those have not been publicly announced yet.
The CONCOM one is, they're gonna be meeting, this coming, this next week. They basically, just to, just to say, they're gonna get going very soon, I think, on the man-hand trail restoration work. I know they've had some meetings with Ed and the contractor to finalize some of the nitty-gritty about what has to be done on that contract, but also just to reiterate to anybody who might be wanting to walk down on, on the man-hand trail at the, at the sanctuary, that road is, that park, that trail is still closed. Those signs are there for a reason, and during this last storm, there is a tree that has fallen down on the suspension bridge. So as bad as the suspension bridge was, it's not any better. So it's incredibly slippery down there. The slope is very steep, so please, everybody, find another place to hike around town. There's many other choices, and keep out of man-hand meadows until we can get the work done and get a really workable trail that everybody will be happy with. But it's definitely not a safe place to go down, and it's overloaded with invasives, among other things. But the tree down on the bridge was the latest coup d'etat. I think it's, and Master Plan, I think will probably, well, given the changes here, I guess we may put that on the agenda for the next time around. The report I had mentioned a couple of meetings ago is actually up on our website, but we probably need to distribute it and then take a look at how we want to tackle that in terms of the select board goals and priorities for the coming year, which will tie into something later on.
Okay.
So that's all I've got.
Great.
Can I just say, I want to congratulate Chris on how successful she's been in organizing the grant-making efforts, and not just the efforts, but also the results, so thank you.
You are on a roll.
Really, I've had a great team. It's been part of it. Kate Rooks and Diana Fetterman have been, you know, without, without question, Energizer bunnies, both of them, working on, working on their, their levels of expertise, and just, we're all just working as a good team, so.
Yeah, that's wonderful, and I was gonna start, Council on Aging has not met since I think I last reported, but I did want to, I'm not sure if it was mentioned about the Memory Cafe.
Oh, yes, I'm sure.
Grant.
Yes, sorry.
So that was, want to speak about that?
That's another one that has gone in for the Council on Aging, to have a Memory Cafe set of sessions, I guess I would say, that would be particularly for persons with dementia or Alzheimer's and their caregivers. And that would be organized through the Council on Aging in conjunction with the Highland Valley Elder Services, and that grant has gone in. We don't have a, yeah, we don't have any response yet. That would probably be September on that one that we'll know. So a lot of these, we've got a couple...
Was this with other towns too?
This is probably gonna be with West Hampton, as far as we know. Yeah, so it'd be a joint Southampton-West Hampton program, and anybody else could come to, that if they hear about it, they're from another town, I don't think they'd be refused, but the idea would be Southampton-West Hampton as a joint program. And so we'll know about that probably sometime before the end of September, I would think.
Other things that they were talked about is obviously about the town meeting and about expenses and closing up the year. But the other thing I want to just mention is that there is an ongoing fundraiser for the pickleball courts at the park, and if you would like to contribute towards the, closing the gap on the pickleball expenses, then a donation can be made and sent to the friends of the Council on Aging. And that information is on the website. There was a fundraiser last night with Veracruz on East Hampton. I walked in, did a takeout, and the whole place was full of Southampton people.
The place was hopping last night.
It was hopping, and I think there was a $5,000 amount towards the pickleball court, so all good news, and soon we will hopefully have a path and also a couple pickleball courts at Conant. And then just quickly, the Board of Health, there was a conflict. I was not able to go, there was another meeting at the same time. There were no mosquito reports, that was asked of Jerry, so there aren't any recent reports, given what was questioned at the town meeting relative to that. They are planning on having a structured meeting. That was one thing we had said, that there is no consistent time that they meet, so they are interested in doing that, especially with the new board. So they're looking to, to know when that would work for you, or whoever was the liaison. And real estate is booming, so our health agent, Nicole, has been very, very busy doing park tests and septic. And they invited the person to the Board of Health meeting that had questions about the spraying, and so they're gonna be discussing that the next meeting.
Good. There were a couple articles recently in, in the Gazette, I think, or somewhere, about what East Hampton is doing, which might be good to sort of dig up and have as a reference too, because they were discussing their program in great detail too, so.
Well, they had announced that you have, have to create a plan, alternative plan to spraying, and they gave a very tight little window, and so I think our Board of Health had voted or decided that would be very difficult to do in the timeframe, and Jerry had said that they would not generally spray, or if there was a disaster or there was an outbreak of like triple E, that they would spray regardless of what your plan was or something. So they didn't feel an urgency to do that, and they didn't have the timeframe, but their hope, I think, is to learn more about it and come up with a plan for next time. And then the Open Space Committee met within the last two weeks. They are finalizing at the printer a Barnes-Aquifer brochure that has a lot of really good information about protecting our water supply. That was approved by the town meeting and funded by the community preservation. Really nice tool. Also discussed a pollinated garden, which is going to be at the Palmer Meadow site on Palmer Meadow Road, which is the water department. The Water Commissioners have been supportive of a 100-foot garden on the Palmer Meadow parcel. They discussed having it at Conant Park, so it'd be an educational tool for the kids or at Conant Park, and I think the decision was made, easy walk down Palmer Meadow and have a nice little trip for kids. So anyway, they're, they talked to Margaret Larson and other gardeners, and they're in the process of looking at cost estimates. Timing would probably be by next summer at the latest. So there was a motion to approve a pollinated garden at Palmer Meadow site. So that's mostly it. All right, any questions for anybody? All right, then we can move on. Quarterly reports, we don't have any. First is the accountant position update.
Yes, we've had, had a couple of applicants, which we will move forward and try to schedule interviews with. There is at least two, I think there actually might be three other applicants in the system which have not completed their, the assessment component through Indeed, which Indeed does for us. So those are incomplete at this point in time. I'm hoping that in the next week, they do complete them, so we might move them into the pool. And I know that Francine has also talked to two CPA firms about what their services could be to come in and help us out with serving as the town accountant.
Okay, I think this has to like really be put to front burner here. This is now going on a long period of time with an accountant, and we have had, yep, had a couple of applicants, and the applicants did not pan out for one reason or another, the two finalists. And then now we have, just for Joy and John's benefit, we have a temporary employee who is not completely filling the full accountant role and is 24 hours a week, and we're in the second three months of a temporary assignment. And so I think we need to really move on this and put a every-week plan for this.
So has anyone, Ed, anyone completed that assessment that we could start to see?
Just, just the two individuals that I sent you the information on.
You did? I thought you sent me, you said that they hadn't yet completed their assessment, so we didn't contact them.
There's two, and I know you tried to reach out to one of them.
I contacted the one, yes.
Right, and there's a second one too.
All right, I'll go back and look. I must have missed that contact.
John, you want to say something?
Well, I just want to reiterate, so by my count, it's been 253 days that the office has been vacant, eight and a half months. So I wasn't here prior to, two weeks ago, so I don't know. I was gonna ask if for, for my benefit and maybe Joyce, if by the next meeting, we could have like a narrative of what, what we've tried to accomplish and all that. But I guess my question is, or my request would be, where's the line in the sand? And could you explain the procedural process? Who's, I understand the ad's running and it's being vetted, and Francine and...
All I'm doing is coordinating appointments and staying in touch with candidates so that they know that we're interested in them.
So I get, right.
So I interviewed an assistant accountant, and...
Is it a full board doing the interview? Is it, is it...
So it started off with John Martin being, reviewing applications with Ed. It was then posted on Indeed. There were two finalists that were selected from that pool that were interviewed by the...
Select board.
By the select board, and for various reasons, neither of them were, we were able to move forward on them. Then we had a couple of possibilities of people that were interested in coming in. We met, Francine and I and Ed met with someone who was interested in doing it on an interim basis, and that also did not particularly pan out. We are, I was gonna have Francine update on the possibility of contracting the service through various auditing-type firms. She's been in touch with two of them. Obviously, one of them is a current auditor, so that would change that relationship. And we currently still entertaining applicants on Indeed. But I think we have to have a weekly plan, and we also, I agree, have to have sort of a endpoint, because this is needed yesterday.
Well, and I think it's not just a plan, Renee, it's action.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there needs to be interviews happening before the next meeting, whatever that is.
So if I can, I can bring people up to speed on what I found out. It's what I heard from Melanson, who's our current auditing firm, is that we're not in an unusual situation compared to other towns, that for some reason, people just are not going into accounting, let alone municipal accounting. So they actually were concerned for, for the number of vacancies, because they audit a lot of towns across the state, and they contacted DOR to express to them their concern over the fact that A, there are no accountants going into the field, and B, even less going into municipal accounting. So I, they can't be our auditors and our accountants at the same time. And that's when the idea of our contract came up, and that it would end, and that we could switch. And she said a number of their auditing clients have switched to become accountant clients, simply because it, they can't find an accountant. She said there's more auditors readily available than there are accountants. So she gave me some, some ballpark figures about what they would do to come in and examine and get a lay of the land, even before they would give us an estimate of what they would charge us. But they do do that for other towns. I remember her saying Hatfield and Hadley, so we're somewhere between the two in terms of population and probably complexity. And I had spoken with another, another one larger municipal accounting firm that the towns outsource their accounting departments to, and they're located on the eastern part, and they basically have the same arrangement where they would go in, they go in, you know, a few days a month to do the accounting work, but they would depend on someone being in the office, such as an assistant accountant, to do the data entry, to feed them information, to interface with the departments, you know, to move things along here, but they would take responsibility for all the reporting and the, you know, revenue and expense reports, all, you know, a lot, things that we have to turn into the state and so forth. They come with, you know, I don't know, a substantial price tag, at least in my mind. I think of some small towns paying $70,000, but when you think about it, it is a position plus benefits, so then that price tag probably isn't too high, but...
Do they happen to have an office in Western Mass at all, or they would...
They would send someone here.
They don't have representation here in Western Mass?
The other firm?
Yeah.
But they service clients here, so they're all, I think they're all over. He didn't say geography was anything. He just mentioned to me that I might want to contact Melanson, who I knew were already our auditors, and I didn't want to create a conflict there, but I did and spoke with them, and they're very willing, you know, to make any kind of switch to accommodate us. And I said if there were, I would explain it all here, and if we had any other questions, either I or whomever could be back in touch with them to pose those questions if we need more information about what their services would entail.
So I wonder, I wonder if it makes sense to run dual tracks, continue with the existing path, and, you know, and I also don't want to be completely Mr. Negative. I know, I know Ed, and I don't know who the temp agency is, I know they're doing their best, and they're pulling double duty to get everything done, but every day that goes farther, more and more happens. Next, it'll be, you know, free cash certification and all that. Do we, do we hold a strategy session of the select board, whether an executive session for planning purposes, for non-collective position, or in a public session, and look to craft some sort of RFP or RFQ to have ready to go if we want to go the private-sector way? Because my guess is, if you take all the salaries within that department right now, you're not gonna have enough money to cover it, because I believe Blanford's about $125,000 that they're paying for theirs.
How much?
$125,000 in Blanford.
That's a small town, too.
But that's pretty much their whole finance department, and no one's ever in town hall. They're all remote, it's all FedEx packages.
All right, so maybe that's not so bad.
But I think if we...
I was gonna suggest, I mean, I think that...
Well, both of these entities volunteered to come in and do presentations.
Can we hear from Ed, what your thoughts are about having a contracted agency as opposed to onsite accounting?
It's my second choice, but it might be the most viable choice, and I would also say that, you know, if we did go that way, it would be very important to have someone that's in that office, you know, whether it's the assistant accountant for 20 hours a week or what have you. But I think we do need some contact person in the office for, whether it's the department heads or the boards and committees to come in to and talk to, you know, whether, you know, it's just to do the Warren information or to get information from.
Yeah, I think you'd have to have the assistant accountant would be my idea, that you definitely would need that person to keep the daily flow of information going back and forth with everybody coming in with their, their requests for bills to be paid, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm sorry, Francine, and I agree, but if we're going to add another 40,000 or 50,000 to outsource, well, perhaps we only need to add another 25,000 to get a good qualified candidate in-house.
Well, I just wanted to add that both said that they would be willing to train whomever our assistant accountant would be, so that they could take on more responsibilities, so maybe over... So maybe over time, we could, they could pull back on some of their services and our costs might go down.
Okay, so I think that I agree, like on the simultaneous tracks, I think we need to explore those things. I'm wondering whether Francine and John would be willing to work with Ed on a weekly basis to really pull together applications, review applications, like move this really forward. I just feel like your hands are full, Ed. And my, I'd hope would, before we did all the line item transfers and all the end of year reports and all the stuff that's had to happen with town meeting, I mean, it's just too much. So thank you for all you've been doing with all of that and with a 24-hour temporary person. But I just really feel like we need to provide more support and assistance in moving this along and having some kind of a weekly plan. Is that something that you're both willing to do with, with Ed?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to really move forward on the applications, find out why they're not doing the, you know, the evaluations. Can we still reach out to them without having that? Is that, I mean, no offense, but I look at interviews, applicants all the time and Indeed, and I'm not sure how much I pay attention to that because they're vetted elsewhere. I mean, I'm not sure I would hold up an application waiting for, I mean, if we're paying that service, we should get that service, but I'm not sure I would hold up an application because of it.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'm happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
So the hope will be that we can have some interviews done before the end, before the next meeting?
Orally scheduled.
Okay.
Well, if we've got two that are theoretically in the system that are visible, we ought to be able to meet with them.
And if you can do a Zoom thing even with Melanson and the other company and just kind of get a sense, you know.
Oh, yeah, I would.
Just, I would just try to explore all opportunities. And at this point, I really think we need to not go any longer without having more help. And then with the assistant accountant position, there was an interview. It was, you want to talk about that?
We, we did have an interview with one individual. A possibility, I would like to see someone with a little more direct accounting experience than this individual had, but it's really the only applicant we've probably had in the last probably four weeks.
And this is also up on Indeed still?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, this individual, as Ed said, she didn't have any direct accounting experience, but she did do accounts payable, she did do accounts receivable. She's worked in municipal government in other towns, so she understands, I think, the bureaucracies that they have to deal with. She seemed to me like a very quick start. She was bright, she was personable. I thought she could do well interfacing with, with, you know, the people here in town hall and others. But again, it's, it's the lack of, of experience and complicated by the fact that we don't have anyone here with her to train her, to really train her on a, on a day-to-day basis. But I don't know that, you know, she's out of the question totally, but she would be somebody I would want other people to see and, and consider.
And what's.
We don't have anyone else.
What's the hours for that position, for the assistant accountant?
It's 20 hours a week.
Okay, is that benefited?
That would be benefited, correct.
Okay.
And the accountant position itself is 24?
No, well, no, the, the temp is working 24 hours a week. The full-time town accountant position is 30 hours a week.
The interesting thing about the other firm that I talked to, and his name is Eric Kincher, that's the name of his company, the one that's on the eastern part of the state, is that they do Hampshire Regional. They do Hampshire Regional's.
The audit for Hampshire Regional?
Yes. And the, their accounting work. And so I'm thinking to myself, well, we're part of Hampshire Regional. Wouldn't that count perhaps as a big chunk of maybe the work that they would consider looking, because he doesn't know us per se. And maybe that would reduce the price in some, in some way, because he's already doing some of the work that he might consider would be part and parcel of, of our town's work. So I thought we could explore that with him as well.
And has Jen, our treasurer, been involved? I think she mentioned that she was familiar with this company. Has there been involvement in the?
I think this was the firm she, she mentioned.
Okay, okay.
Right in, Eric?
Originally, yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, with one application in four weeks, something's not attractive. And I think that if we can kind of bundle those together, somebody definitely needs to swing back and have a conversation with the person because it's already been a few weeks. And I think we need to move forward on both of these. I think it's just too much to, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
So can I just clarify? So we're, the two tracks are looking for an accountant, full-time position with the assistant accountant, or hiring a firm and having the assistant accountant?
I think that's also, I mean, based on what you just said about Blanford, the question is, I think the feeling is we would need an assistant accountant to interface with all the department heads and do data entry and all that. It would be hard for them to do that. But I think that's, I think it's open to however configuration it would work. We seem to think that it would be necessary to have an in-house, at least assistant.
I think it would be very helpful.
Yeah.
So we have a potential, potential in the interviewee.
For the assistant.
And the firms have expressed that they would help in training potentially. So that I think is something to consider.
I absolutely think it's a good thing to consider.
And the one firm also, if we hire our own accountant who doesn't have much or any municipal experience, Eric Kincher's firm would be willing to train our accountant onsite in municipal accounting, which is the hardest thing for us to be, to find people with that experience. So I appreciated that. I mean, both were great to talk to. I would love to have, you know, the rest of you hear what they have to say. So this can be part of our decision-making process.
Feel free to set it up, absolutely.
If you want, that's fine.
And is there usually, how many year contract, is there a minimum?
That we didn't, I didn't go into. I would imagine that Melanson would be similar to the audit, which was a three-year contract. And I would think that the other would probably be very close, if not the same.
And that might be, that might be one of the things we want to do is create a one-pager or a two-pager, you know, here's kind of what we're thinking. Give it to them so they're both presenting, you know, based on, on the same basis.
That would be good.
Good idea. Okay, well, let's hope we can move on. That's been too long. Any other questions about that? All right, Route 10 Bridge Water Main update.
And they are working out there, even though the last probably week hasn't been very conducive with all the rain to moving along with that. But they seem to have been making very good progress before that.
Yeah, it was slated to be done in about three months, right? They should be.
The, let's see, the calendar, yes, the estimated work schedule was 90 calendar days or 50 workdays.
It doesn't seem like it's blocked up traffic very badly. I mean, I had, anytime I've been through, I mean, I, I think they've actually, you know, been working on the schedule and having the road closure is not, not terribly intrusive.
Yeah, I mean, I think probably the longest I've waited there is maybe 45 seconds while the work's going on. You know, they do have the one lane.
Other people might know, but my few times traveling through, it hasn't been bad.
Was it a long time?
Well, no, it's, they didn't have a comes up. They were coming down the hill and all you could hear were the lights. And you were just waiting for that dissection to come.
Oh, dear.
They, the lieutenant that helped me was great.
Kudos to the police, thanks. That is to take the water pipe that's in the Manhattan River and put it underneath the bridge where it actually already has hold up the pipe. And then the step after that will be to actually take the dam down.
Correct, which we aren't doing. That's another.
Yeah, right, that's a private.
That's another project, correct.
Any questions about Route 10 Bridge, the East Street Bridge?
Yes, we got the, we just got the contracts back from, signed by the contractor. So we'll be putting all those together. And Randall and I will be working with John Furman from VHB to set up a pre-construction meeting.
Is there a timetable on that?
It'll.
It was extended, I think, until what?
Well, yeah.
The materials.
Well, we had the Mass Works grant extended to June 30th, 2022. But the contracts call for the, I think it's substantial completion by, I think it's May 12th or 15th.
Yeah, I was going to say May.
And then complete with final bill. I think it's three weeks after that.
Anything you want to add to that, Randall? No? Okay. Okay, so we stopped having our, having our COVID-19 meetings that we were having every two weeks with police, fire, border health, EMD. Seemed like we were sort of in the gray and everybody had PPE and everybody was healthy and schools out. So we didn't feel a need to continue to meet every two weeks. The town halls open, they're still doing case tracing, so everybody here should make sure that, Ed, you have their people's names.
Yes, we have the lists.
Okay, good. Any other COVID-19 updates?
No.
No, any questions? It's going okay? Has been many public coming in?
We've had public coming in. I won't say, you know, in my mind, of course, it's been almost a year and a half, but doesn't seem to be like, you know, lines at the offices or what have you. So it seems to be, you know, fairly steady, but nothing overwhelmingly.
Good. Any concerns about the staff, by the staff in terms of exposure to public or any cleaning concerns or anything?
Not so far, like I said, you know, we've left up the Plexiglas barriers, you know, and in my, my mind, that's not only a help with the COVID-19, but the colds and flu also. We're keeping the same cleaning and disinfecting schedule that we had while the, you know, emergency order was on for the pandemic. We still have plenty of PPE here if anyone, you know, needs or wants masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, what have you.
Good, any questions about that? Okay, CARES Act update. Last I knew, there was going to be an accounting of what's been requested, spent, still reserved, and figure out what's left. And we have until December 31st.
Correct.
To redistribute any of the money.
And to spend any of the money, correct, yes. Yeah, we still have some items that were approved under Phase Two that, you know, because of supply, haven't arrived yet, but they are still due within the next several months, you know. So we've still got monies there that will be spent and accounted for. And Chris has been very helpful in putting together a, a cross-reference to what was approved, what was spent, so we can get to what is actually left to ask for redistribution on those funds.
And are people still waiting, a lot of departments still waiting for supplies? You were waiting for something big, right?
He's got his generator.
Yeah, just for his generator to come in.
Right, right.
October is old.
Okay.
And I'm just trying to coordinate the installation of the, the Victoria tank.
It's probably one of the biggest things left, I think, on our earlier approved list.
Exactly, and so it's the one that sticks out, definitely.
Is there any sense of how much, I mean, I keep asking about the fact that MEMA came, or FEMA, rather, came through with 100% funding or what they said they were going to versus 75, so that frees up 25% of whatever was FEMA originally funded?
Correct.
Do we know a dollar amount yet that's available or freed up now?
No, but I can, I could, would think that especially because of that 75% to 100% that it will be, you know, considerable, so.
Good.
No, we need to get together on this again. I think we've both been.
Yep.
Busy on different things, so we need to make a plan to get together sometime in the next few days and knock it out.
Right. And possibly going back to the departments and also, I mean, I think it was nice last time, did anybody access the rental assistance, the food assistance?
The food assistance, yes, absolutely. In fact, I think that got maxed out.
Yep.
If I remember.
It did through the, through the church.
Yep.
Definitely did.
And also from the Good Eats to Go, the seniors.
Through the council agent.
Offered some gift cards.
Both of those were maxed out in terms of what we had put in the, you know, the authorization. The housing folks, I have not heard from lately. I don't know that anybody's taken advantage of that yet. There were 6,000 available for that.
Yeah, the last I had heard, I think Jim said that the, they hadn't utilized it as of yet, but people were using, utilizing other, other grants first before this one would, this one would come up.
That was supposed to be for some rental and or mortgage assistance, basically. So it wasn't a lot, but it was, would help anybody, I'm sure, who needed it. So we'll check back in with Jim and just find out. I don't know that I've heard anything updated there.
Has that information gotten out to the public at large as opposed to just the one, like?
It's definitely on our website, and I don't know what else they've done, but yes, to a certain extent, yeah.
Any other things about the CARES Act?
No.
Okay, all right. The American Rescue Act, we got 300 and something thousand, which is part one of two checks to go towards the American Rescue Act funds. This is federal money that came in through the state.
Correct.
And we have a sense of now the categories that it can be used for?
Yes and no. We do know that for infrastructure, whether it be water systems.
Sewer.
Sewer.
Broadband.
And broadband. Those are three areas of capital that it can be expended into. We do know that as far as any extra police training caused by the police reform bills, that it will cover that.
It will.
Yes, that, that just got announced a couple, a couple of weeks ago and clarified.
That's really good.
That will help us out, and I know Ian was worried about that to some extent. And other than that, it seems like.
COVID expenses.
Huh?
COVID related stuff.
Well, COVID-related stuff, seems like there'll be an area for, how would you say it? Again, for remote technology, for improvements in that. But other than that, it seems, the categories I see seem to be back to food assistance, you know, rental or mortgage payments type of thing. Testing again for COVID, vaccination-related, those all seem to come to the top for it.
So there definitely needs to be a group that looks at this. I think when I hear water, I'm thinking that we, you know, this might be an opportunity to move forward with some water improvements. I also broadband, are there people in town that still don't have access to broadband? Sewer is always on the table, at least for the main corridor, like, other than the usual COVID and assistance with training and wages and that sort of thing, does it make sense for the group that looked at CARES to elicit from department heads, elicit from water, highway, like what, what a request?
The big categories I see at this point, I'm going to say for the money we're getting, sewer, sewer might be nice, but it's not going to cut it. So the categories that I'm seeing is maybe water improvements and definitely broadband extension into areas of town that may not currently be, be served.
And that would be the technology committee anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, or at least somebody from there that, you know, has got that, that level of expertise, maybe not the entire committee, but maybe somebody from there could.
Okay, so the money's in the bank, and it has to be expended by when? Is there a deadline like it was for CARES?
These funds are supposed to be given to us over two fiscal years, '22, which we just got, and '23. And the. And we're supposed to be able to expend it over four fiscal years.
Oh, okay.
Totally different approach.
And the total amount was what, 332?
Well, that's the interesting part. The 345 that we got is supposed to be half of our fiscal year '22.
Okay, so it's gonna be.
And actually technically.
Okay, so I thought it was like $650,000 that's something that was slated.
And I think it's actually technically the fiscal '21 allotment, but there were, in total, we were supposed to get, at least according to, is an estimate of the federal government, of 1.8 over the.
Yeah, right.
The two years. And I have not seen any reference to what we're, you know, I wasn't even expecting the 600 and whatever it was, $1,000 that we were supposed to get for our first allocation to be split into two. So I don't know what we're, you know, are they still gonna come forward like 1.2 million for the next fiscal year or has that changed?
Is there anybody, like a rep that's assigned to the towns that you can call and find out any specific information or?
There is, but like I say, the information that's been coming out so far is, you know, very vague and not specific. I can call, but I don't think we'll get much more than that, but I'll call them and find out.
There are some online resources. I've watched some of them, but, well, the good news is that, you know, the money's already here and I think that there should be appeal to various departments and department heads and determine what would be priorities. I agree, I think broadband, I mean, I think that some student might not have access to internet is really concerning. So is that something that the group that looked at CARE, you and Ed did most of that, is that something that?
Yeah, we could.
The technology committee and/or you, Ed, and whoever else you could recruit, I'm happy to help out.
Yeah, no, I think we could. I mean, you know, we could at least put a brainstorming session together and stuff.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's really what's, what's needed is, you know, where, what's the priority? How do we, how do we think we can move with anything and actually make a real, make good use of the money and have a real project that we know is necessary?
At least a plan as far as reaching out to various departments and trying to see what people feel are priorities, given the amount of money that's available.
Yeah, and the flip side of that is like you started to allude to, you know, does the school still have any need for remote learning, you know, hotspots, broadband expansion, you know, what have you for, you know, remote learning in the classrooms, you know, or remote technology in the classrooms?
Maybe a way to create other hotspots around town too, at some of these places that really are just not very accessible, you know, and that would be.
Has the technology committee or the, I'm assuming it's them, have they already explored discussions with Westfield Gas and Electric or Oil, Gas and Electric about extending the fiber optic network?
It was with Whip City Fiber. We had actually two presentations.
Yeah.
But I don't know if the technology committee has reached back out to them.
No, not to them.
And when they came, they gave us, and I think this is what kind of stopped the discussion, it was $4 million, their presentation. That's what they estimated the cost, it would take two years to complete the work. I know they're, they have Westfield and I know that East Hampton is doing it and we're right in the middle and it's unfortunate that we're not able to take advantage of that opportunity, but so far, nothing has come up. But the other thing I was thinking perhaps, could there be some, some initial seed or planning money available through the American Rescue Act for the beginning of this public safety complex?
Yeah.
I mean, I know they had a plan from several years ago that was way too expensive and the town turned it down, but if we would have to engage someone to start looking at the feasibility and perhaps a design and then go look for money after that.
Yeah.
Certainly can ask about it.
It would be like to put something in.
They can ask about it.
You know, we looked at a few of the state grants, you know, for, for money for that and everybody said, no, we just, we just don't do public safety complexes.
Yeah, and I haven't seen any inclination of that being in an acceptable category for the American Rescue Act so far, but we can ask the question.
Certainly can ask the question.
Infrastructure.
Yeah. So can we have at least you two kind of review?
Sure, yeah.
And I'm happy to help out too, like have a process in mind for reaching out to.
Yeah, and if it's worthwhile, you know, I think the idea of having somebody reach back out to, to the Whip City folks and just renew that contact is not a bad idea, just to see what's going on. But that presentation was what, two years ago now that they came here to visit, so.
Yep.
And that's up on, that's up on our website if anybody wants to watch that.
Yeah, I think the technology committee, that would be really awesome for them to actually connect up with them. Okay, so maybe you can just let us know what the, next time we meet, what the plan is on that.
Sure.
All right, next is the departmental transfers and we have the revised copy in our handout. And is this the last of them?
This is it.
This is it. Do you want to review that or do you, what do you?
Sure, and I'll tell you, you know, the revised copy has two changes in it to the one that I had sent out and, let's see, one of those was, the finance committee had pointed out that the $90 which was overspent in the fire department thermal imaging cameras, which is a capital account, we can't transfer into, but more appropriately, that's a journal entry back to take that original charge and take $90 out of it and just put it into fire department expenses or somewhere else. And then the other one was the cemetery commissioner expenses, I had actually asked for that one on transfer number two. So the new total is $92,883.14 and the first item, this would pay off the snow and ice deficit for fiscal year '21. So the first item on there is winter roads expenses of negative $62,048.34 and that would be taken from two accounts, winter roads wages of $26,031.16 and, excuse me, group health insurance $36,017.18. The next one on here is general highway expenses, just to cover the chip ceiling that was done at the end of the year of $9,172.41 and that would come from general highway wages of There were some rounding errors in the salary and payroll accounts. Town administrator salary was overspent by 99 cents. That'll come from the administrative assistant wages of 99 cents. Town accountant expenses was going to be $681.79 in deficit at the end of the year for the last Johnson and Hill invoice, so that's gonna come from the town accountant salary for, for $681.79. Technology services was $101.09 in deficit. That'll come from technology equipment for $101.09. The fire chief salary with the rounding error was 12 cents in deficit, that's gonna come from fire department wages of 12 cents. Library maintenance was in deficit for $826.49 mainly due to extra work needed on that boiler that's gonna be replaced in the library during fiscal year '21. And that is gonna come from library book expenses, $826.49. Street lighting, $18,057.87 in deficit, coming from police department wages of $15,714.79 and police department expenses of $2,343.8. And yes, this was because the streetlights through the process did not get shut off during '21. Highway superintendent salary was off due to rounding of negative 4 cents. That's gonna be taken from the admin assistant to the highway superintendent of 4 cents. And then debt for the highway truck was off $1994 and that's gonna be taken from the group health insurance for $1994.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the line of transfers? Francine, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all right, questions?
I do, because I've never, sorry. So just in general, how do you decide to, the process of, to pay for the street lighting I'm gonna, we're gonna take from the department wage, the police department wages? How, how is that decided for, to pay for the winter roads expenses take from the group health insurance?
Basically, at the end of the year, I reach out to the departments and ask them both, you know, what they have that might be in deficit that needs funding. And I also ask them if there's anything that they have that they are going to be underspent on and then just take those and utilize them appropriately.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Is it the priority that department would look within its own budget first before?
That's generally, that's generally what I look for, yes.
So this is a significant amount of money left over in health insurance, group health insurance, because it's funding $36,000 towards the winter roads and an additional almost $2,000 towards the debt on the highway truck. Was that, why?
Could be plan changes, you know, and, you know, you look at it and say considerable, however, you know, a, if someone's on, rather than the HMO, if they're on the PPO, that can be like a $12,000, $15,000 charge to the town just for one plan, so it adds up quickly. So, you know, you might, may have had employees leave that were on it, although, you know, and then just someone come in that isn't, but you could have had plan changes during the year either way. So, you know, I still think that, you know, I think the total was, it was actually 86, but we did find a mischarge in there of 26, so there's about $60,000 that was available. But I don't consider that a, shall we say, a large margin of, just because you can't get plan changes that go the other way from, you know, whether it's, you know, single to family, which is more, or, you know, the HMO to the PPO. So it is a fairly volatile account that you can get swings.
Can I just comment on, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just comment on the health insurance, so this was one of my comments on the next item. We underspent it by about 9 and 1/4 percent. It's almost a 10% savings for what we budgeted and I didn't look at it, but I assume that we used the exiting number of 963, the budgeted number, and we added an increase to that so that potentially, but if you have vacancies and all that would come up, but I would go back to when we're fully staffed, asking the town accountant, where's your work paper? Or I believe this one is, it may be done in conjunction with the treasurer's office since it's health insurance. You know, where's the work paper that you use to create your numbers? What change? Where are the adjustments?
Right.
Where's the full transparency?
Right. Give us more detail, absolutely.
Because my understanding is we were planning for this year's budget, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought, I heard that our health plan went up 30% and, no?
No.
Okay, well, that's good news. I'm glad if it didn't, that's what I thought I understood, so.
There would be time to look for another health plan.
I'm thinking, look at all the service.
And I think just my usual question on the famous street lighting and all of our net metering credits and all that kind of stuff too with the cowpower people, are we gonna get to the bottom of figuring out how to reconcile those accounts?
Yes.
Without an accountant coming in or?
I.
I know you're wearing that hat, but I don't.
I'm just gonna leave my office and not do any town administrative duties probably next week and do the balancing of those, so.
Yeah, because that is just a nightmare. I mean, when you look at, figure out, you know, the charges on our, on that bill and yet, you know, we're getting these credits and.
I know.
They've gotta be reconciled somehow.
On the library book expense, I know that there are certain things that go towards the accreditation. I think they're working to come up with a plan for the accreditation as the override didn't pass. So does that negative amount of $826, does that negatively impact that? Because I imagine that might go towards the expense, but not the library maintenance? So we're moving money, is that, are we moving money away from a crediting expense?
They wouldn't have expended it this year, so it's still staying in their budget, so, in a year that we had a waiver, so it will not affect that at all.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? So we have a motion and second. Did you get that? Who made the motion and who seconded?
I didn't. I'm gonna.
I moved. I think it was Francine and Chris.
I'm gonna count on the person that does the minutes to get that.
Am I repeating this for nothing?
I will take that down. Francine and Chris.
All in favor.
Aye.
All right. Next is the revenue expense report. We have expenses through 6:30 and we have revenues through 4:30, I think.
Correct. So the revenue report hasn't changed since the last meeting.
So Ed, with this last transfer, are there any, is there any encumbrances on any of the balances that we have in the expense report? Because it's showing a balance of like totally for the, for the whole report, about $800,000.
We have not had any encumbrances for '21 as of yet because we're in the process of doing the last warrant today. So after this one, anything that invoices come in for fiscal year '21, they will have to request encumbrances for them.
Okay.
Does that, does that include, have any, are there any payroll wages that need to be carried forward or no?
No.
They're not, so then my big question would be, if I just pick out the police department, they underspent their budget by $102,000 for the year.
I'd have to go back and take a look and double check that.
Well, yeah, no, just going off.
Yeah.
I mean, granted, we just transferred some money out.
Yeah.
Of there, but.
Mm-hmm.
Just a point of order.
Yep.
So does, does the current expense report take into account, though, I'm assuming it does, the transfers one, two, and three?
No, it does not.
Not yet.
No.
So that 92 comes off of that, comes off too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So for the next meeting, can we get the one that shows all four of these transfers so that we know?
Yeah.
Where we stand or what's real?
I doubt if it'll be ready for the next meeting.
I mean, we're, I guess I, we're sure that where we're taking things from, we don't have to go back and put it back because we took too much, right? I mean, we've taken.
We can't go back and put it back.
I know we can't.
This is it, we're done.
We've taken, but this report doesn't reflect any transfers we've done for.
Correct.
Transfer one, two, or three yet.
Correct, correct. I tried to take those into, I tried my best to take those into account when I did number four.
Okay, so choosing number four.
I did miss one.
Choosing number four, okay.
Yeah.
What questions people have about the expense report?
So John, where were you looking, just, just for clarity?
Page, page two of expenses. Again, if I just start at, at the top of the page is the PD and I started off by highlighting anything that was over $10,000. Wages, 43, the coin incentive, which kind of surprised me, there's $20,000 there. I would think that unless we had a significant amount of retirements from the PD, that that money probably should have been spent.
Yeah, let me make sure, yeah, let me make sure that I had asked, my thought that all of the payroll accounts, I know they got expended and the question is, did any get, miss getting posted? So I will go back and take a look at that.
That's an odd line item.
To be that much underspent.
You know, underspent.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, so again, I just added up that balance, what's in there down through rough numbers is 102,000. It looks to be unspent and then if that's a pattern for next year, which I doubt it is, but if it is.
Yeah.
And we increase that overall budget by 2%, we're just.
Yeah.
We're building up a lot of free cash for a year from now.
Yeah, yeah. Can you refresh my memory about the election wages? Can you refresh my memory about the election wages? It's only 3.32%, it's a line of 43.50, and then, but right below it is election registration expenses, which is overspent by 124%. Was that?
That, I have, I have some charges to that, that has to be transferred to COVID.
Okay.
Which will cover this.
But wasn't the other thing that the state said that they had to be employees, the election workers, rather than, you know, doing, treating them like a vendor? And so, we hadn't, we didn't put the, we didn't know that when we planned the '21 budget.
But we made that, we approved it, we made the change, right?
Made that change, yeah, made that change, and added $3,500 to it.
Okay, great. And then what about the gas and electric in town hall? That's 277, 278.
That's where, that's where all our Cowpower credits and net meeting credits sit, that I have to figure out all the transfers back out.
Why don't we do solar?
And the veteran agent expense, that's only at 1388, is there, that's not the veteran benefits, that's a, that's more, that's been utilized pretty well, but the veteran agent expenses? It's actually not that much anyway, it's only 60.
I'll have to check and make sure that he's got all his bills submitted for fiscal year, that may be one that needs to be encumbered.
Okay.
And what about two, looking at just the health agent wages? Almost all the employees are at 90, 95, 97%. Why would we have only 79 spent, 79% on the health agent wages, spent?
Hers, hers are as needed.
Okay.
Yeah, rather than set hours, so.
I know last year, there was a transfer into that account, into, from the health agent to health director.
That's correct.
Any other questions about the expenses?
I'm assuming the library maintenance was related to the boiler? The overexpense there? Part of that?
Yes.
If anybody has any questions about the revenue? Ask about that, too.
I think it's three, three months behind.
Yep.
So, the revenue goes until the end of April, is that right?
Correct.
The, on the, on the temporary outside services that we have in the accounting office, or the accountant's office as an assistant, is, would there be any benefit, just thinking where we are, period of time, and everything's gonna start falling, is there any ability to increase those hours, if it's a matter of data entry that needs to be done? Is that, and I don't know if that person has access to sofrite, and they're up to that level, that they could be doing the data entry, or, I'm just trying to think, where's the bottleneck, and how could we help, if possible?
Well, the person is doing the data entry into sofrite. The 24 hours a week came because of being a temp agency, there's a straight fee, and then there's an administrative fee on top of that, and I forget what, it's 40-something dollars an hour. So, basically, the math was done to reduce the number of hours because of the higher hourly rate, to make sure that the temporary town accountant through the temp agency did not exceed what it would cost on any particular week from the salary account.
So, the question is, are the hours adequate for the data entry?
You mean, for the assistant accountant?
Well, for the 24 hours currently. Is it adequate for the amount of work ahead with?
Well, it's adequate for the data entry, where it.
Right, okay.
Fails, shall we say, is anything over and above.
Right, more of the accountant functions as opposed to assistant accountant.
The true accountant functions, exactly.
And are there any funds that have gone, either CARES Act or otherwise, to the accountant office for the increase in accounting relative to COVID?
None, none that I'm aware of.
Are there, is there justification for that? Is there funding that could supplement the accounting office because of the increase in?
I think there was something for reporting.
Yeah.
On the, whether the quarterly reporting may be back into, Mima, there might have been a line for that, I don't.
I'll have to go back and take a look.
I don't know that we've charged anything to that, but I think there might have been a line for that, actually.
That's something you can talk about when you're on the accounting part.
So, as, as we look at the revenue, and again, we know that there's a lag here, but if I'm understanding this, we've got, we're negative 1.6 million in revenue, is that right? Is that what I'm reading, for the general fund? And. So, are we, we're fairly sure we're making that up to cover our balances here?
Yes, you got, you need to have two months of state aid, you've got real estate taxes coming in, you'd have still some more excise taxes coming in, so, yes.
And when do we usually get the state aid coming? What month, when is it?
State aid comes in every month.
Every month.
But, I mean, in, in general, if you, you know, take a look at it, it's, that's probably, the estimated revenue is $18 million, so this is probably 13% of that, and I know there's ones that do go up and down, but, you know, with two months left of the year, you've probably got about that same 13%, so.
And I think the big amounts of property taxes, real estate taxes, supplemental taxes, they're all way up there at 100%, 99%.
Yeah, I mean, those revenue sources are already, already in, right?
Mm-hmm. Any other questions about expenses and revenue?
I just have one other, sorry. Just not understanding the, is that the one? Yeah, the, one on the undertaxes, the excise, the payment in lieu of taxes? Estimated revenue was 55,000, and we've only taken in 4,000 so far?
Yeah, those payments usually don't come in until the April, May timeframe, it's usually one shot.
Is that veteran and senior?
What's that?
Is that veteran and senior? Is that payment in lieu of taxes, like?
No.
Those aren't abatements at all, no?
Are there pilots from any enterprise accounts that come in annually?
What's that?
Is there a pilot from the enterprise account that comes in annually?
It's.
The one from water?
It's, it's not a pilot, we do take in fees for the work we, or allocate some of the fees, yeah, from the, both of those accounts, both the transfer station and the water enterprise fund.
On an ongoing basis or annualized?
I'd have to take a look at.
Because that could explain why.
Yeah.
That particular line item only gets updated once a year.
Right, right.
My, my question on capital funds. It appears, again, I'm just going down the way they're ordered here, but not to keep picking on the same department, but we spent $52,000 on a police cruiser that wasn't budgeted, and then, $13,000 on fire.
Page 12. Page 12.
It almost looks like to me that maybe these, these appropriations were approved in special town meeting, and maybe transfers weren't booked.
I don't think it's the transfers weren't booked, I think it's the fact that it's recorded basically as an appropriation, where it was actually done as a borrowing, so the journal entries haven't been made to account for that.
Okay.
That might be similar to, in that same category for the fire turnout here, because I believe John got a grant for some of that.
Yes.
At some point, so it wouldn't be in this category, as capital funds?
Any other questions?
No, I guess not.
Pretty good? Okay, let's have an update on the MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program.
It has been completed. Fosse-O'Neal has submitted their information to the state for the completion of the project and the reimbursement. I still have to put together an accounting for our match to send to the state, and I will do that over the next few days and get that out of here, but the process, the process is complete now, so we'll just wait for the state to say, yes, you're finished, issue our reimbursement, and also name us as an MVP community.
And then, would they help us with, so we identified vulnerable areas when it comes to flooding and trees and all, it was a great exercise, I think Fosse-O'Neal did a fabulous job. And they came up with, we all came up with a list of vulnerabilities.
Yes.
Relative to climate change and so forth, and will they help us now, or are we sort of like, then looking for a grant to address one of the areas that were identified?
We'll be looking for grants that address one of the areas that is identified, but we will also get bonus points on the applications for some of those grants, because we've gone through the process and completed it, and, you know, if we have actually specifically in our MVP program listed, you know, that item or a similar item.
I sat in on the listening session part, but I don't think I've seen the actual MVP report itself, is that up on our website? I haven't had a chance.
It has not, no, it hasn't been put up, I haven't received the final report as of yet, as soon as I do.
We can circulate that around, yeah.
Yes.
Be good to have that as a reference, yeah. I have a copy of the draft, do you want to take a look at it, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I have it literally right here, I'll send it to you.
That'd be great.
You're so good to me, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, any questions about the MVP process? Just want to thank everybody for being a part of that, that was a lot of really good stakeholders and a lot of good workshops.
Lot of good points that came out of it, that I know I hadn't thought about, so.
Yeah.
It was a very helpful process.
Especially as we get emails about trees threatening people. All right, let's talk about the open space and recreation plan update. Tell me it's done.
It, that's done, yeah, Ken has all the information, and I'm just waiting for him to send me back the finalized copy of that, so that we can put it on the town website.
Okay, great. And that will be also shared with conservation, that's important, this allows us to be eligible for grants and things like that.
We actually, we had to look at it for the park grant that we just did, and we are listed on the website as having it done, so.
Awesome.
As far as they're concerned, it's done enough to count us as done, but definitely we need to get the, the final piece submitted, so. That was one of the requirements for the park grant, too, to have the, an updated open space plan.
Great. Next is Greenway, I had actually asked that this be a standing item, only because number one, on the MVP survey was Greenway, it was funded at the town meeting for the funding for that, it seems to be a huge interest of the town to move forward, so I just want to get regular updates on that.
Well, just one thing, I think we both have heard from Lindsay Sabadosa, that this CPA bill that they've been talking about for two years, probably, or a year and a half, anyway, where we've been restricted with the Greenway, because community preservation monies cannot be used for acquisition for the right of way, because technically, the railroad has reversionary interest, I believe.
Because of rail, yeah.
In the area, so a bill had come forth, probably a year and a half ago, at least, to be able to use CPC funds for the acquisition, and the word I got, I got a text from Lindsay on, on the weekend, saying that it had been, it had gone through, and it had been approved at, at the Boston level, and I said, so what's the next step? And she said, well, it needs to just be signed by the governor, and I'm sure he will. So, I, we're not quite clear whether it's only gone through the House and not the Senate, but it's close, so it's closer than it's ever been, so that could be very interesting to have those monies freed up to also help.
Absolutely, yeah, and I know the House voted on it last Friday, but I don't know for sure that it has gone and been acted on in the Senate at this point in time, I'll have to do some research.
The message was a little bit vague, but I, but nonetheless, pretty, pretty encouraging news, anyway.
Absolutely.
Given that it had no movement all last year, basically, obviously, so.
Yeah.
That it got picked up in this session.
Yeah, and we still have one outstanding grant that we have applied for, for funds that would also help with this particular project.
Yeah, and actually, we should know, that was a Mass Trails grant, and we should, if their deadlines are right, we should know about that, actually, by the beginning of August, I would think. It's been a while, I think we put it in in January or sometime, so I think we'll probably hear pretty soon on that one.
Right, I think Lindsay did, Sabadosa did say that this, her mission is to.
Yeah.
Help Southampton with its Greenway.
Absolutely.
Been very supportive, yeah.
Yeah, she's been great.
Yeah.
Any other necessary business, I can't wait until the next select board meeting, which was July, it is July 27th.
So, I have a question, so how does a non, how does a member who's not the chair get either something on the agenda or move something forward?
So, usually what I've done, and I'll, we'll see what Chris wants to do, but usually around Thursday of the, you have a 48-hour notice, and the town hall is closed on Friday, so usually by Thursday, Ed sends me a draft agenda with, you know, it's a bunch of standing items, and then I'll say, add this, add this, add that, and then different members would contact me and say, can we please add such and such to the agenda next time? So, I don't know if that's what works for people, but we're not supposed to have a deliberation between members, so it's always good to go to Ed directly, so I don't know if that's, Chris, if that's what you would want?
I think probably to go to Ed, copy me, or, either way, or, you know, at least, I think both of us should be in the loop on that, so if there's an agenda item that you'd like to suggest, so that we're both aware of it, and, I don't know, I'd say certainly by, I don't know, Thursday morning, before the meetings, at the latest, to give you enough time to.
I would say that's for the meeting coming up in two weeks. Yeah, I gotta post it on Thursday, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yes, exactly, yeah. So, I usually give him feedback, so that he can post it with the 48-hour notice, usually on Thursday?
Right, so if I want something on the next agenda, I need to.
Contact Ed.
Send it to Ed and CC Chris by this Thursday. Right? Okay, I'll do that.
Yes, that would, that would work.
Okay. Other, so the other thing, too, is the agenda, you know, what was happening is, we were like, whatever happened with that, or what's happening with that? So, what we decided to do, and you can change that if you want to, but we ended up adding a lot of things, because there's just a lot of things on the table all the time, and we just wanted to get regular updates, and then, instead of waiting a month or even six weeks to say, what's going on with East Deep Bridge? They just keep some of the current items on the front and center.
Yeah, but once things have been relatively resolved, I think they should come off.
Yes, 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 yes.
Because otherwise, it just becomes.
So, then we still have some things that we have on the end called pending items, which are ones that we just don't want to lose track of, so part of it is, you can't talk about things that aren't on the agenda, for the most part, unless it's somewhat of an urgent thing, so it allows us also to bring up things.
And the way everything's structured here in Southampton, the select board is not supposed to act independently with department heads, everything needs to flow through Ed to the department heads, we can't go direct, correct?
Pretty much, the department heads.
Opening remarks?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And I think, too, if we've got some decisions to make as a committee, we make them as a committee, that, you know, if, for example, we said, look, we need to have a liaison for something, or to reach out to Whip City, for example, I would prefer that we all bring that up, and we vote on it, and everybody's clear, and it's transparent, we know what that is. You know, rather than people, just because somebody might have a contact with somebody, I'd rather not, you know, do that individually, but rather keep it as an open, open discussion and consensus vote, okay?
Try also to try to not, like, for example, Jim Senni from the Housing Department emailed me and said, I'd really like to have a select board liaison, Joy had mentioned during her. Joy had mentioned during her talk that she was interested in housing, maybe she'd be interested in whatever. I said, I can't earmark her to do it. She needs to volunteer to do it, and that needs to be brought to the committees. So I also try not to just say, hey, you know, why don't, it should be part of the committee when those kind of things happen as opposed to behind the scenes.
Exactly.
So I just wanted to mention one thing, and I sent it to everybody, that last year the select board had identified some goals. And at a future meeting, Chris, if you want, you can bring this back up again, but I just wanted to let folks know that we had kind of identified last year goals. So infrastructure and economic development, so we looked at East Street Bridge as being a high priority. Second was the East Street Road from, stage two, I guess, is from the bridge to Route 10, and the next stage is from the bridge to Line Street or County Road. And we are on track for federal monies, but it's not till 2025, so love to have it happen sooner, but that's where it stands. Public safety complex, community solar, sewer, limited corridor Route 10. We've had presentations about limited sewer, and then fiber optic municipal light districts. So that's kind of what we've talked about in terms of infrastructure and economic development. And then for community, community and employee benefit, disability insurance, it was on the override, not, currently it's self-funded as a town, and currently it will stay that way because even though we had a presentation, we had supported that, it was not funded or voted on. Senior and affordable housing, preserving strategic open space, the Greenway, complete and up-to-date IDK ability, safety and maintenance, and then Hampshire Regional High School Regional Agreement Review. These were all talked about as, with the previous board as being priorities, so we can revisit this if people would like to.
Yeah, I think we ought to take this, you know, up at the next meeting or two and have a real action plan and see where we want to go. I mean, this is a lot to work on, but, you know, I mean, have some realistic goals and say, okay, how are we going to achieve these? I mean, do we need yet another, as much as I hate the idea, another ad hoc subcommittee, for example, on something, you know, whether it's, I don't know what it might be, but something, you know, how do we, how do we operationalize really the master plan results that came up when they did the update, so.
And the additional funding for CARES Act and the rescue plan. I mean, I think they should be consistent with what.
With the goals.
And what the townspeople want.
Yep, yep. And I think just while we're on East Street, sitting in our face here, and you did talk at some point about doing some at least temporary repairs on East Street, another surface coating? Is that what I heard? Sure, would you mind?
Yeah, that'd be great. Believe me, the town would like to know.
People, I'm sure would appreciate hearing anything about that.
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. So I think it was six months ago, we talked about East Street. You guys had brought it up, and I asked how much you thought you wanted to put into it, and I didn't get any response. So I applied for Chapter 90 funds to do, it's basically a Band-Aid. We're going to do about half of our yearly allotment of Chapter 90 funds for an overlay of the highly degraded sections, which accounts for about roughly less than half of East Street. So I've identified four sections of East Street that we're going to do overlays on, and it should hold it together for a couple of years. We did, I believe it was around $40,000 in overlays five years ago. The governor opened up money for, it was called Rapid, Rapid Pothole Repair or something in the spring. We had a particularly harsh winter. One year I bought a hot box with the funds, and the second year I put money into East Street and one or two other roads just to do overlays. And they've held together pretty well, so we'll see what happens with this one.
Can you give us a ballpark figure of what it costs to do per mile or something, and whether it's paving or overlays or?
Mile, I believe I pulled that together for the override, and it was around $85,000 per mile.
$85,000 per mile?
Yep.
Okay. So when people query and they see that we've got lots of Chapter 90 money, that it's like.
Well, here's the thing. People say that all the time, we have Chapter 90 money. They're not accounting for all the stuff that's already encumbered. I have projects that are already encumbered that aren't on the revenue sheet that you guys get.
Good. Well, I think that's one of the things I would like to suggest as we move forward with department, you know, meetings and reports to select board.
I've given you guys that information before about how much we have encumbered in different projects.
Yeah, I think we ought to bring that back up again so we understand what's encumbered already, what the future plans are for pavement around town, paving and whatever other improvements you're working on, and as well as probably an update, given the situation with the town meeting and the truck, et cetera, and the debt exclusion that did not pass, to have an update on your fleet replacement plan as well.
Sure, yeah. You guys know that we keep getting further and further behind.
I know.
Even when we get, I know, I'm not criticizing, but if we get one truck and we ask for two, that's one more that we're just pushing.
But I think, I think it would be beneficial for everybody to really see that we do, there is a plan. I mean, I've seen too much stuff on social media that I refuse to deal with that is just talking about, why don't they have a plan? It's like, there is a plan. I know you have one, and I know John has one, Ian has one.
We have lots of plans, we just don't find them.
So we need to make them much more public, and people will have.
I'll send out his 10-year plan to the board that he submitted with his capital plan.
Because I think that would be, you know, helpful. We need to have that. But I think as, as we have depart, as we have.
And the value of doing these quarterly updates so that people can hear is that we're educating people throughout the year and not waiting right before.
Right.
The budget and asking for an override for people to start to wrap their head around all the things we need as opposed to knowing our situation as we're going through the year.
Yeah.
And I think they can experience it, they can start to say, oh, that's what it is. It's that, you know, it's that can, those road conditions.
Well, and it's, you know, but we, as long as we make that information available, then, you know, it's up to everybody to take their own responsibility to do the research and find out and ask questions, come to a meeting, whatever it may be, but.
Well, I would urge them to reach out to the department heads, too, because I mean, speculating on Facebook.
Yeah, oh, no. No, no. No, it's too much. So, I mean, it's not, it's, half the time, it's not the right information. So I would really prefer people would, you know, go to the source and find out what the information really is.
I welcome residents to give us a call or email.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Instead of just posting.
Sounds good.
And Tammy does a great job referring people to the right department.
Yeah, thanks, Randall.
Hey, Randall? The $85,000 per mile, that's straight overlay, correct?
That's, that's, so the components that would include, would include the actual asphalt, tack coat, police detail, prep work, what else is in there? Line painting.
Oh.
That's the high points.
Yeah, my point is this, that's, that's the basic.
Oh, and that's an overlay. That's not to replace, that's not to re.
Yeah, if the road needs to, is it bad enough?
Yeah.
The first step after that is it needs to be scarified and then paved over, that's more than the $85,000. The worst-case scenario is full-depth reclamation, where they actually have to pull up the old road and put down a new, you know, new base and a new surface, and that's even more expensive.
Or in the case with East Street, we're going to do an engineered plan. There's a big cost to that. You're going to have engineered drainage included on that road because it doesn't currently have it.
Yeah.
You know, realignment if necessary, right-of-way acquisition, and the addition of pedestrian-friendly accommodations. So like, that job to redo East Street's, it's going to be a big number, which is why we have to go for the transportation improvement funds through the state, in fact, to get funding for it.
Sure.
Because we simply don't have the money to do it.
Correct.
Through general fund or Chapter 90.
Got it. Yep. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randall.
And the bridge is going to be done, when? They're starting and they'll be done?
May.
May.
Yes, they have to, they have to be done May of 2022.
And the funding goes extended until June 30th, 2022?
Okay. We're still getting it done.
As long as one bridge is done before the other one starts. Yeah. All right. All right. So I guess we're ready to move on to the personal change forms. As our liaison, would you like to?
Okay.
Group them accordingly? So we have a lot of increases that are based on the wage adjustments that were made, voted on, put in the budget, and approved by the town. So that goes at least through Darlene Motica. Do you do the PRFs first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if we do the PRFs and then we do the ones that went through the regular budget, and then by department or by category.
Okay.
So the first ones are an interim and a permanent personal request form for an interim and a permanent principal assessor. The rate is 2086 per hour to 2867 per hour for a 31-hour week. It's benefited annual salary is, cap is $41,651.37. And it's been signed by the PBB and the Finance Committee, both of them.
Why is it 31 hours? We just talked about another position was 30. Is that just history? Is this, why is it?
It accounts for the average of one after hour meeting in a pay period.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because oftentimes the board of assessors meeting is at 4:30, for example, so that would be.
It's 4:30, I thought it was 5:30. 4:30?
It's been 4:30.
Agreed to be their liaison.
Sorry about that. Yeah, it's been 4:30. And just to be clear, too, that this is, they're advertising both, it's the same thing. They're only getting one position here. But they're advertising for either a permanent and/or an interim to see who they can get first, I guess, but.
Okay.
That's the intent. And just from the board of assessors' point of view, since I've been sitting in on these meetings, we know that this is probably a salary that's not going to be terribly attractive. But they are bound, from what I understand, by the limit of what is in their budget since the override did not pass. They're bound by what's currently in the budget for them. So they would love to be able to have a better offer for salary, but we'll have to see what we get once they advertise.
Okay. All right, do we want to vote on the, on the PRF as a separate item?
Okay, sure. Is there a motion, a motion for the interim and permanent principal assessor?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the PRF for the assessor position in general, both as an interim and/or principal assessor.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, Chris and then Joy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next set, then, catch me if I make a mistake here, the next several will be those increases that were put into the balanced budget for this year, and it's for Christi Facto, and she's the Assistant Treasurer/Collector at a rate of $19.75 an hour for 31 hours per week. The next one is Janine Domina, the Administrative Assistant in the Assessor's Office for 12 hours a week at $1590 per hour. We have Joan Linehan, the COA Director, as an exempt position, working 26 hours per week at $2448 per hour. We have Sabina McCarthy, the Assistant Town Clerk, working 18 hours a week at $1695 per hour. And Judy Zedonis, the Town Administrator, Administrative Assistant, working 16 hours a week at $16.89. And all of these go into, went into effect or will go into effect to July 1, 2021. I think I captured everyone in that category on this list.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah. And I just wanted to mention, it's been signed by the department heads, the town accountant, and the PBB.
Sorry.
That's right. A motion to approve them.
Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next group would be, next one would be our department, John Workman, our Fire Chief, working 40 hours a week for salaries retroactively to July 1, 2020, yeah, 2020, going from $86.7 to $90,000, an increase of 3,000, retroactively $3,300. That's signed off by everyone. And then John Workman for his fiscal year '22 salary at a rate of $99,600, effective July 1, 2021. Everything is signed off by everyone.
So his contract expired in 2020, so it was retroactive for a three-year contract, and then the EMD function was added to his contract for FY '22.
Twenty-two.
So that's what the, accounts for the change in there. Okay, is there a question?
Or if you want to do a motion first?
Yeah, motion to approve the PCFs for John Workman.
I'm moved.
Joy, is there a second?
I'll second for purposes of discussion only.
Okay. Joy and then John? Okay, then discussion.
No, I'm following the, I just wanted to double-check my understanding. I'm following the retroactive, so that puts him at 90, right? And then entering into this fiscal year, going up to 99.6, now the EMD position was a thousand a month, was it not?
The grant was a thousand a month from the CARES Act.
Right.
To fund that, it's 6,000, am I right?
Correct.
6,000 in his salary.
Okay, plus the 93, plus the 3,300 from before.
Right, that's why.
Okay, so that was the first number that.
I think it changed for FY '22.
Yeah, it was the first number that threw me off, then. Okay, so it'd be, yeah.
John, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have multiple. So my first question is, what is the funding source for the retro? Because I see that everything, it looks like the contract was approved on 6/22, signed off.
Yep.
Which means it's in last fiscal year.
He had the money in his budget.
Hmm, I, maybe I missed the transfer.
It was transferred, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I didn't see that. All right, so that's coming out of last year's money.
Yep.
And then the budget that passed had that line item at $93,600, but you're saying there's another 6,000 in there.
Yeah.
Under a different line item, but that's not reflected up above for the accounts to be charged. So it looks on the face of the document that if I vote to approve this, I'm voting in excess of the budgeted amount because there's only one line item there. If there is grant money, there should be a separate reference account for that.
There is.
Because I might try to match them up.
There's also a separate, separate account.
It's a separate one.
Appropriated to.
It's the.
Right.
But it's not listed. And an example that we'll come up to later will be for Robin Richard. On hers, you'll see that she's got two different line items making up her different things. So there's a piece of the puzzle missing.
Yeah.
That's all.
So the account to be charged should have the COVID account number, right, is what you're saying?
It's not COVID, actually, it's in the line item. It's in the operating budget.
It's in the line item. I'm going to try to get some of it out of COVID, too, for half a year if it's possible, but it's also a line item.
I just don't believe it's on the Fire Chief wage line item. I think there's a secondary line.
It's a secondary, you're correct.
Right.
Okay. But currently, it's intended to be funded out of the operating budget. It's not.
Correct.
Been delegated.
And currently, since that's actually a new account, it doesn't have an account number.
Oh.
Because it's grant funds?
No, because it's, the appropriation is a new account.
The previous, previous year had been funded through CARES Act.
So it didn't, it hasn't had an account number assigned to it yet.
That's the retro you're talking about.
No, the retro was funded by the grant, and it was Don Snyder up until six thirty this year. Starting seven one, the money was now part of his contract for an additional six thousand dollars.
Correct. But if I match this up to the budget that was approved.
Right.
I can only find ninety three thousand, six hundred dollars.
It's two line items. And like I said, the EMD doesn't have a.
EMD is.
It's new as of seven one, so it's not.
So the account number doesn't exist as of yet.
The accounting number doesn't exist at this point.
And this new funding source going forward, the six thousand or whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
Is that reoccurring revenue, or is that grant money?
It's going to be reoccurring revenue.
Coming out of the tax base.
Correct.
Right. It's not grant funded, it's operational.
Right.
But like you said, he's going to try to use some of it towards, yeah.
I'm going to try to get some of it from the CARES Act.
It was part of his contract that was signed.
So I guess I'm, because I don't have the form in front of me to match up the budget.
Mm-hmm.
I won't support this at this point. I'm willing to table it for the two weeks until it can be shown to me that that appropriation passed in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
But if I'm in the minority, I'll just be outvoted.
Okay.
I can show you how to pass the budget. I can go get the budget.
You want to table this for now, and we'll do other items and come back to this when he produces the budgets, okay?
Yeah, I actually, I was just looking for a copy of it, actually.
Is everyone okay with it? Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll move on then to new personnel in the Fire Department. We have Brandon Blaze as a probationary firefighter on an as-needed basis of thirteen fifty an hour. We have Tyler Colby, as needed, as an EMT at fifteen dollars and ninety two cents per hour. And we have Maxwell Gagnon as an EMT firefighter on an as-needed basis at sixteen ninety two per hour. All three have been signed off by the department head, the town accountant, and the PBB.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next one, I think we'll take these individually, the next four. First one is Darlene Mattioka. She is the Administrative Assistant in the COA, working ten hours a week at a rate of fifteen, to get, fifteen dollars and ninety one cents per hour. It was signed off by everyone, effective July first.
And this was part of the balanced budget?
Yes.
The override?
Yeah, this was part of the balanced.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Any comments? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next one is Thomas Goggan.
Gone?
Gone. Pardon?
Gone, I think, isn't it?
Gone. Okay, thank you. On, he is the Water Superintendent. On here, it says he works eighty hours a week. I think that was a biweekly number. Okay. And he's the Water Superintendent. Current salary is seventy seven thousand, five forty one, eighty five, with an increase to ninety five thousand, six hundred dollars. It was signed off by the department head, the town accountant, and the PBB. You all have that in front of you?
Motion to approve.
Pardon?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Discussion? I'd like some explanation of how we got to that point. This looks to be substantial increase. I mean, percentage-wise, as well as dollar increase, twenty-three percent, by my calculation.
Mm-hmm.
How did this get put into the budget correctly? Did we, this is one that Finance Committee, I believe, did not.
Right.
Recommend at town meeting, right?
Right.
Because it was a, my question is, is the Water Department subject to the personnel policies? Because if they are, then it's contrary to what the personnel policy says.
Well, I think it's.
I believe that it is, based on, I can tell you what it says, because I have the personnel policies right here.
This is a compensation plan.
All employees employed by the Town of South Hampton, including those who are paid through an enterprise fund, but excluding officials that are elected by popular vote and persons under the direction and control of the School Committee, are subject to the provisions of the compensation plan to the extent that said provisions do not conflict with provisions of a collective bargaining agreement. I know in the past, this came up, and there was a new budget proposed at town meeting, and there was a recommendation to provide the same two percent that the employees got. And then there's an addition in the personnel policies for an additional two percent merit, based on a satisfactory evaluation. So I'm not sure how it.
I would not oppose an increase, but I really have an issue with a twenty-three percent increase. And I'm just concerned about equity amongst department heads. I think that's a bad precedent.
Before Jen talks, the twenty eight, ten to twenty nine point seven nine, I have a six percent increase. It's a dollar sixty nine, which comes out to six percent.
Tom Dory.
Tom gone, yeah.
Not on Seneca.
Super.
I'll get to that one later. Sorry.
Yep.
Seven to ninety five.
I did the math, right? So twenty-three percent.
So we've been asked by the DEP, who does a review of our water system every year, to look into employee compensation, because they feel it's lacking. So based on industry standard, the typical range for this job is seventy three thousand to a hundred and twenty eight thousand. Locally, South Deerfield is a hundred and five thousand. East Hampton has a position that's lesser, that they have a couple employees in, at ninety thousand. Our water super happens to have basically multiple positions. He has to have all the licenses that would normally be spread out over four or five employees in other towns. So when we had, six years ago, when he applied, everybody who applied had our maximum as their minimum, or they were all wanting more than our minimum, our maximum. So we've been trying for six years to try to get his pay in line with the industry standards. And currently, it's very competitive. There, every time a job comes up, the town has to raise how much they give so they can get somebody, you know, they steal from one town to the other, and it keeps going up And that's how we came up with that number. And we can't afford to lose our super.
Understood. But we didn't really afford to lose our accountant and our assessor as well.
And you know, now here's the other thing. Now, Tom has been an employee for six years, and he's one of the, one of the most senior employees here. I mean, our highway superintendent's a little higher than him, and there's one.
Higher in seniority, right?
Yeah, there's actually three people that have, or two people that have more seniority than Tom, and he's only been here six years. And we can't have the turnover on this job every.
No, understood.
Couple of years, because it's a delicate system. We, you know, if he leaves, we have to have somebody, if he leaves on a Friday, we have to have somebody Monday in the position. So we have to pay a subcontractor, and subcontractors are a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
The Select Board really put prior, you know, like, we had a presentation by the previous PQB chair saying, you know, do something. And so we really tried, in spite of really short budget, to say, let's look at this chart, let's adopt this chart, let's like, take the people that are at the lowest end of the spectrum and give them, you know, according to the personnel policies, like, a two percent plus an additional two percent to get, you know, like, start somewhere. And we tried to. And I've just learned that every time there is an action that's unique and separate, it has an equal and opposite reaction in this town. The fact that you're, you know, like, a twenty-three percent, eighteen thousand dollar raise, like, the Highway Department, you know, like.
I understand that.
Randall, subject to a two percent raise, and is not even, like, a highway superintendent is not making what the Water Superintendent is. I mean, I don't know. To me, it just feels like, I know we don't want to lose people, but we also, like, I feel that way about everybody in town. We don't want to lose anybody in town, but every action, believe me, I was here on this board when the building inspector was raised above, and then we had an action by another employee in town that says, because of this, then this should happen, and then that had to happen. And it just feels like we tried so hard to be methodical, analytical, and, and so that, this is like, way outside the.
I mean, I would, I would support a, an increase, but just not that amount of an increase. I mean, I guess I'm curious how you guys went from zero to twenty-three percent rather than zero to ten percent.
We've asked and been denied raises for seven years. We've never gotten more than two percent. He also has not.
There was a four percent raise two years ago.
Yeah, but he also has not gotten two percent a couple of years.
The Water Department got raises when no one else did last year.
They didn't get them last year.
I'm almost positive that the Water Department was one of the only departments that actually did get raises when the rest of the town didn't.
As far as I remember.
And then the year before that, it was a four percent, because we basically said, you can't have this massive raise when nobody else does, and if you want to do it according to the personnel policy, you do a two percent raise, and then you do an additional two percent for merit. So you did an evaluation, and then you got four percent. So it's been four percent and then two percent. So I think that the Water Department was the only one that got raises when nobody else did.
If we don't get this in line, we're going to lose them, and we're going to end up spending a hundred and five, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, plus money wasted in subcontractors to cover the water system. So we have to get this.
I would like to send, personally, I'd like to have PQB look at this, because they are the ones that created the personnel policies that say that enterprise funds are subjected to the personnel policies. So they signed off on it, and I'm not sure why they did. You were at the meeting, was that discussed? They approved an eighteen thousand dollar, twenty-three percent raise?
Right.
Was there a rationale for that?
I don't, I don't.
And we do have a founding article, nineteen thirty one, I believe it was, that says we are in charge of our employees.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
And so.
Completely, all that, we're in charge of all the Water Department property, we're in charge of all the pipes, and, you know, that's.
Yeah, I'm just reading what it says in the personnel policies, which goes out of its way to say enterprise funds are subject to this agreement. And your Water Department's enterprise fund. So I would like PQB to sort of, kind of, I'm just.
But didn't they approve, they approved this last week.
But I was in at the meeting.
Yeah.
Was it discussed?
They signed off on it.
Was there a reason given?
No. No, I don't, I don't think there was any, if I recollect, I mean, there was, we went through a lot of things, there was a lot of discussion. And unfortunately, those meetings aren't recorded, for me to go back and take a look, you know, to make sure that I have everything straight. But I don't believe there was an issue on their part.
And we're in line with the study, the Jacob Study.
Mm-hmm. Well, the Jacob Study says that Water Superintendent minimum was sixty six, four. The benchmark is eighty three thousand and change, and the maximum is a hundred and six, two fifty two. But I don't know what the definition of maximum is. I mean, other than a pay rate. Is it number of years? Is it education? Is it licenses? I, you know, there's no definition attached to that for me to kind of.
I mean, he's twenty-one years of experience in the industry, he has six years with the town.
I'm sorry, how many years of experience?
Twenty-one years.
Twenty-one years. I guess that would be close to the maximum.
And, you know, the trick is the licenses. People don't, back in two thousand, people stopped going into these positions and stopped getting these licenses. So there's nobody to pick from now. You know? And every, every town is short one or two water employees, and, you know, they're all scrapping by. So everybody's fighting for everybody. They're actively looking for our employees.
So not going as high as ninety five, six? Not going as high as ninety five, six, what would you, what would you suggest as some kind of a compromise here?
I don't know. I can speak for the, for the whole board, you know?
Using as a.
Yeah, this, I'm using this as the measure, I mean, the study.
I mean, even if we met kind of halfway, got to the bench, what was your, I'm sorry, what was the benchmark again? I'm sorry.
The benchmark is eighty three.
But that's several years old, too.
Pardon?
This is based on a study that was done five years ago.
No, this was, no, this is February of twenty twenty last year.
The Jacob Study was five years ago.
No, I know, but it was adjusted as of.
Did they adjust it?
Adjusted it, yeah.
You know that.
Twenty twenty, yes. Positive. The PQB chart was not adjusted, but that was.
Okay.
That's the most current chart, yeah.
They approved the Fire Chief salary as above the benchmark.
The COA Director was twenty percent increased.
Right, because he was making twenty dollars an hour.
She was eight percent below the bottom range.
How much did the Fire Department, the Fire Chiefs?
That's not even relevant.
Increase in the.
It's ninety three.
It's ninety six, or ninety nine, I thought you said.
He's now the EMD at six thousand dollars a year, when we had twelve thousand dollars a year to funded, grant-funded EMD. So he's doing now EMD at six thousand dollars a year.
So, point of order. Procedurally, what can the Select Board do? Either approve.
Approve or deny it.
Approve or deny, not change, or alter it.
We can send it back to PQB, or send it back to the Water Department.
With feedback, if we deny it, or take.
I could bring feedback back to the board, to Tom, and, you know, to see where, he's not going to be happy, but he's looking for more than this.
I've just learned that, I mean, I just, you know, Randall, Highway Superintendent, subjected to a two percent raise, because he's part of the personal.
I understand.
You know, I mean, like, every action in this town has an opposite reaction.
I mean, I would argue the grading of this position, too. I really think it should be higher.
Well, I would like to.
Because of the technical nature of it, you know.
I mean, that becomes, that becomes a PQB discussion. That's why I'd like to send it back to them, and.
And since Tom's come on, now when Tom.
A second. Go ahead.
When Tom was hired, we weren't a treatment system, we did no treatment. And now we've added one level of treatment, and we're about to add a second level of treatment. We've also added extra buildings. They come in on weekends, they have to check the buildings every day. So we've added to the job, we've made the job more complicated, you know.
Is that reflected in the job description?
I'm not positive on that.
Pardon?
I'm not positive on that.
I'll get you a copy.
But it's changed since he's been here.
And the job description should change, and the scoring should change, then. I mean, otherwise, it just feels inadvertent, like, how'd you come up with eighteen thousand?
You can ask for the job, the rescore before, and we've never gotten anywhere with that.
Well, that's what PQB does.
They don't do it.
Well, can I just ask Ed, he's been trying to say something, and then I'll come and ask you, okay?
Oh, I just wanted to go back, and my recollection from attending the PPBB meeting is, they basically went down the list, and if the funding was approved in the budget, no matter what it was, they approved the PCF.
He's right about that, yes. That's what they did. But.
So do you know, do you know offhand what the impact of this is going to be on the rates? Is there, if this is approved, is there a rate increase coming down the road?
We've had two rate studies done, and we're within the range with the two rate studies. We just had our rate study re-reviewed a year and a half ago. And so it's within the budget.
Sir, do you want to say something?
Yes, just.
You have to come to the microphone and introduce yourself, please.
Name is, name is John Perzella. As a taxpayer in town, I don't like to hear people getting huge increases, usually when we have those kind of votes. I'm reticent to just jump on them. However, my background also, I've got a master's degree in civil engineering, I've been out of that field for a long time. I understand a lot about what might be going on technically, and also, I was an executive recruiter for a number of years. on technically, and also, I was an executive recruiter for a number of years. And I'll, I'll basically attest to the fact that you start playing a game with a person like this, I don't even know the individual, okay? I would say it'd be money well spent to keep the man happy, because in, in this work climate today, trying to find a suitable replacement, you're talking about a situation with an accountant, you could be looking at a year to find somebody, maybe not even ultimately as qualified, to, to replace the person that you've got, if the person is there, performing well and happy. It's, it's, it's a difficult situation, I agree. But again, as a taxpayer, I would be in your situation, I'd be looking at it the same way. But as, as, from the practical side of things, I think that there's a strong case to keep the person happy, and keep that person in place, because if you lose that person, and things, I don't know exactly what, I've been out of recruiting for a few years, but I used to do executive recruiting, mostly in manufacturing, and mostly in management levels.
Accounting?
No, I never, never got into accounting. It was mostly in production inventory control, manufacturing, engineering kind of people.
Yeah.
And...
Well, as a small town, I think we're put in this position all the time of, you know, departments do comparisons. I only support comparisons that are done by an objective body. We oftentimes have employees that work four days a week, not five. It's a 6,000-person town, not a 18,000-person town, so it's not always apples and oranges. And I've been here a little bit long enough to know that every action that we take like this has a consequence.
Absolutely.
And it involves another employee that all of a sudden is at the same level, who then feels this should happen, and I thought we tried very, very hard this time to be mathematical, and do something to advance wages, and then out of the blue is an $18,000, you know, increase, 23%. The decisions that we made in the operating budget were based on a chart that was approved by the select board. So I would, you know, we're always in that position of, we don't want to lose this person, we need to give them more money, and we're always trying to have some parity.
It's, it's, it's not an easy game. It's...
No, it isn't.
I, I used to work a lot of placements with Sabderms down in Westfield, and there were many engineers there that had been looking, looking for equity, let's say, for, for years. And the company, under the management at a certain time, was tight, and, and they were trying to keep things in line, so what was happening is a lot of people were not getting where they would like to have gotten. And what happened is they lost half their engineering staff, probably, to Smith &amp; Wesson. And these people all went to Smith &amp; Wesson, and they got, I mean, 40, 50% raises.
Yep.
So when you're, when you're looking at the potential of a person who's got the value, and ultimately, that's what it comes to. Does the person have the value? Is the person worth it? What are they doing? What are they, what are they providing? And is that value to your, to your situation?
Right, and I think, if I can interrupt, because I think we need to continue. But thank you for your input. But I, I think we, we have to recognize, and we do recognize people's value, but I think we have to recognize, we don't want to lose anybody, and we've already had, you know, two serious departures. You know, there was not a big increase that was being looked for, for the assessor. You know, we couldn't even get $3,000 to keep her here, out of our existing budget and our system, right now, the way that wages, that way the position is graded. So I'm all for, I'm totally in support of, of trying to recognize people's value. I'm just concerned about taking such a giant leap, all in one swallow. I would rather ask that you take it back and get some medium-range, something that we could be more comfortable with, that I would be more comfortable with, at least, this point in time. I'm not, I'm not willing to go for a 23% increase.
And I'm, and I'm thinking, maybe with a plan in mind, where incrementally, over the course of two years, you put something forward that says you're going to get...
And we would agree on it.
This, and this, you know, in year one, and year two, you'll get this much more, you'll get there, you'll just get there at a slower pace. I know it's hard. I, I, it does come down to, it does come down to equity. I know it's paid from a different, different fund, it's not coming from the taxpayers, but it is a rate...
It is coming from the water bills.
And ultimately, the residents are paying for it.
Only the water users pay for it.
Yes, the water users, not the people who own wells, who have wells. But, but nonetheless, I mean, in the interest of, of, of really keeping everyone, because if we start treating people so differently from one another, we may keep this gentleman, but then someone else is going to look and say, well, I didn't get that, I'm, I'm out of here.
Yeah, but you're going to, so if we get this agreement, you're going to end up with the same thing. He's going to want that agreement. The other person's going to want, you know, no matter what, you're going to end up with that.
There's no easy solution to this.
I know, but we need to be able to defend it better.
But trouble is, you know, we may end up with two employees to replace this one employee to get the correct licenses, because you have to have somebody that has 20 years of experience to get these licenses, 15 years to get these licenses.
So it sounds like...
But we may end up with two 10-year employees that went on different routes to get the licenses, and you could end up paying $140,000.
And are all of these indicated on the job description? Are all these licenses listed on the job description and given credit for?
All the licenses are on the job description, yes.
John, do you want something?
Well, I wonder, the DEP did change and require us to have double licenses, why the, why the water tech. The water tech now has to have more licenses than an actual water tech. The water tech is almost a assistant supervisor. And we may end up getting, having to get a third at some point, too, if they change it again, but that's probably 10 years down the road.
I guess, my history tells me that enterprises are usually standalone enterprises, and that's why they're set that way. So I, I'm kind of surprised that this is before us. But that being said, perhaps we should delay action on this in the next item for two weeks, and ask KP Law to review the enabling acts of the enterprise, and the QPP, or Q...
PQB, yep.
PQB, and determine which one is the guidance that we're supposed to follow. And in the off-chance that it ends up being the enterprise, then I think it goes back to the commissioners, and they decide if it ends up being, I mean, at least, let's put that one issue to bed.
Yeah, I would like, I would like the personnel policies and procedure board to address this, because it, to me, it says in black and white, all employees employed by the town of South Hampton, including those who are paid through an enterprise fund, are subject to this personnel policies and procedure, which says that it follows certain compensation plans. So I would like...
So my, my question is, does that supersede the enabling acts of 1931?
Right, right.
Ed has his hand up.
Yep.
I'm just going to let you know that two years ago, when you approved the 4%, the two and the two, under the merit, the request was for a higher amount. KP Law at that point in time did review this, and said that, yes, it was a select board's decision.
Okay.
So we've already done the legal opinion?
I don't remember that.
Well, you saved that money.
Do we have that in writing?
I'll have to, I'll have to go back and take a look.
Yeah. I don't remember that being reviewed.
Would somebody like to make a motion, or...
There's a motion on the floor.
Or he has a motion, okay.
The, just to clarify, Ed, so per your memory, was there a higher number before the select board, and the select board adjusted it at the meeting?
That is my memory.
So, the, we had, at one point, we had a budget before town meeting, that there was an amendment put on the budget that lowered a raise down. That was not last year, two years ago. John Martin was here. That was two years ago, when we tried to do this the last time. It got lowered at town meeting.
So they went the route of the compensation plan, which was 2% raise, which is what the other town employees got, and then another 2% merit based on a satisfactory valuation, so...
Right, so if, if, so if, if KP reacted to the vote of town meeting, that's different, right? Because that's the legislative body that they're reacting to, not the, not the elected...
Our enabling act tells, or is the way I read it, it's hard to read, it's from 1931. It basically says that we present a budget to town meeting, town meeting approves our budget. That's what the enabling act basically says. So when somebody modifies the budget at town meeting, it gets modified. But I don't know if that applies to everything, or how it applies.
Would the chair, the outgoing chair, incoming chair be opposed to just asking KP to reaffirm their decision?
Not at all. I think that would be completely appropriate. I would like to have, if you're able to meet with the personnel committee, I don't know if you did, or if you just submitted the form.
I was on vacation, yeah.
And I would just like to hear from them, because this is their personnel policies document, and it says pretty much in black and white what the limits of compensation plan, and that enterprise, enterprise employees are subject to this plan. So if there was no discussion, and they just approved it, I'd just like to know, you know, why there wasn't any consideration in terms of what's been done in the past.
I know, in the past, with the, with another water department employee, we did implement that paragraph that she cited, that it was limited to whatever the increase was that the rest of the town employees were getting. And that was, that was probably, it was in fiscal year '21, must, must have been early fiscal year '21. It was right when I first got on the PQB that I recollect, I was applying that very same paragraph. But it's...
What do people want to do? It's hard.
Even, even if town meeting approved it, my, I guess I go back to finance and having faith in the finance committee and their deliberations that heard everybody's budget requests, and this is one of the few things that finance committee did not recommend for town meeting. So in spite of it being voted on, they recommended against it. And I guess I would still want to have a better feeling about, yes, an increase, but not at this, this level. And I don't know, I wasn't part of the finance committee discussions when it was all presented, to know what their questions were back and forth, but...
Can we get a...
Well, finance committee does not see this.
What?
Not this.
Not this, no, no.
But they did see our budget.
No, but they...
Oh, but they saw your budget, yes, but they don't, they don't see these...
I'd be interested to find out if it's approved by town meeting, and does that mean it's approved, you know?
So I would like to bring it back to PQB and have a discussion about the, what's written in black and white right here, in terms of this, enterprise employees are subject to this personnel policy document, and I'd like to hear from KP Law about who, what the decision-making body is relative to this request.
So I'll withdraw my motion. I'll make a new motion, that we request KP to review their opinion that was issued two years ago, as who has jurisdiction, and to outline the process, step one, and ideally within a week. And if it ends up being the select board's side, then PQB meet within the second week, so that whatever we're going to do will be on the agenda. So basically, table, table this and the next item for two weeks, pending those action items. And if PQB does end up meaning, then we invite the water commissioners or their designated, and to have a full discussion.
And you'll be on to PQB, so we'll get that information. Is there a second? I'll second that. Oh, God.
Is the, is the next item a person in my department?
No, it's the other water department employee.
Other water department.
The next PQB meeting is the...
Just one of the things, is there, is there a methodology where you could just phase this in over like two, six-month periods, instead of in a one-year jump?
I think that would be the intent, to find out from legal counsel who has jurisdiction, and then whoever does can set the groundwork.
But that way, it might ease any kind of apparent, you know, out of, out of the reasonable realm of a jump.
That's a good idea.
Also, at the same time, keep the candidate out.
Love to have somebody from the select board sit down with us.
John is liaison right now to PQB.
Yeah, water commission paralegal.
He would be at the meeting, two hours ago.
Water commission's never had a liaison, and I've been on it for eight years now. Never, we've never had...
Oh, I thought, I thought you meant for this, for this issue, yeah.
We never have a select board person come to a meeting. We've had one or two.
Really?
Yeah.
When do you meet?
Sporadically. We're meeting Thursday. We usually meet, meet the second Tuesday of the month, but now we're doing Thursday this week. If somebody from the select board wants to come and, you know, hear it right from our, our employees, you know?
I, I honestly, I'm not disputing what, what it is that you're saying, or what he deserves. It's what we can afford, and that, this is what we struggle with. And that's across the board for everyone. And I think, you know, how we try to be equitable, or bring people to a certain point, you know, of equality among employees who have essentially the same grade levels or the same positions, and that's what we tried to do this year. I, this is, this is really tough. I hate, you know, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying we, we need to think about some alternative to how we get here.
We, you know, we cannot afford to lose them.
I hear you.
My question also is, so the town meeting...
Believe me, I'm one of the right payers. I don't want anything wrong with the water.
They voted for this.
What's that?
They voted for the increase.
Who did?
Meeting, yes.
At town meeting. So how much of select board's hands are tied?
That's what we want to understand. We're getting a little bit different information. We're finding out, we're hearing that personnel policies and procedure board oversees this, and, yeah.
So it's all three of those factors that are considered?
Right, so I think what we're looking to have...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. I think the job description should be, reflect the position. I think that if there's anything in there that's not current, then it should be updated by the personnel committee. I'd like the personnel committee to say, are they, or are they not subjected to the personnel policies of the town? And I'd like KP Law to tell us who's got the decision-making, and what the process would be. So that's what I think, what the motion says.
Yeah, and I think we expressed, through you, to the two employees, that we're just looking for a two-week clarification.
And not going beyond two weeks.
And sharing whatever, whatever the opinion is that comes back, we'll share with the commission.
Will KP also decide if the town voted at the annual town meeting to pass it?
Yeah, it's basically...
That's part of the discussion.
The only issue that I take with that, and I'm going to be very honest, is that the detail isn't there. They see a number and a number.
They see the enterprise funds.
They don't necessarily know that that represents $18,000 increase. I mean, we don't get to that level of detail, so that, and I, and if you put it out there, how would people vote? I don't, I don't, honestly, I really don't know.
Right, they just put out a balanced budget, that's all they, they give, a balanced budget.
But there's no wage breakdown amongst the employees, unlike the other departments, so, as with other places.
The finance committee did, the finance committee did state at town meeting how much the raise was. They, you know, they said it, so, everybody knew it, so.
But do they...
Comprehend it, yes.
Let's go back and see what the vote was at town meeting. But anyway, just a note, PQB apparently meets on Thursday at 6:00, according to my time go, this Thursday.
If I could request that we call the question?
Yes, I was just going to say, we have a motion and second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll definitely put it on for next two weeks, and if you can write to KP and provide all the information we just talked about in terms of the personnel policy, I would like to be able to have PQB speak to their own policies. So that is for the two positions. So we also jumped over the PCF for Senegal, right?
Yeah.
All right, so the last one, do you want to speak to...
We're not doing Dennis?
That was part of that motion.
Yeah, Dennis was...
Hey, that's part of that, both of them, because it's slightly more than, okay. All right, and then, then, okay, the next one is Robin Richard, the assistant to the highway superintendent. The present salary is $17.81. The requested salary is $22.70 per hour for 25 hours a week. Now, Ed, my understanding of what happened with the budget and all 25 hours, as opposed to 20, under the, the general, general fund, and the, and the five hours under the water department, all got blended into the line item that appeared on the general budget. So all 25 hours were rolled there. I don't know, and the question is, is that five hours pay per week accounted for in the water budget as well?
No, I, I think you mean transfer station.
I'm sorry?
Yes. And yes, it is.
Trans. So the five hours is in the transfer station?
Yes.
And 25 hours is in the...
20 hours is in highway admin line, and five hours is in transfer.
That's not what Ed explained to me.
That, that would be the transfer, not the water, but that's correct, because what happened was, when the select board was looking at positions that were falling, shall we say, below the scale in the Jacob study, the information on that position came forward and totaled the two together at 25 hours. So when the select board voted to increase that salary to the $18.16, it was multiplied by the 25 hours, and that was all put into the highway department budget line item.
As opposed to...
As opposed to being split of 20 hours there and five in the transfer station.
So is the five in the transfer station?
Yes.
So you have 20, so this is a total of 30 hours?
No, no, it's 20.
No, I, I know it says 25 here. I'm saying budgeted, is there 30 hours? 25 on the general and five under transfer. Under, 20, 25 under highway and, and five under the transfer station.
No, I, I budgeted for 20 hours under highway and five hours under transfer station.
So I'm trying to understand, what was the mistake that occurred?
And we got to $18...
All 25 hours were taken, were put under the...
All 25 hours were put under the admin to the highway. All 25 hours were put under the Admin to the Highway Assistant.
And nothing was taken out of the transfer.
And nothing was taken out of the transfer.
So it made it look like 25 hours in 20 and then an additional five from the transfer.
So that's why you get to 30 hours.
Yeah, we, we direct charge for enterprise funds. Like if my guys go and work for Water Department, they direct charge to the wage line. If I, if she's working on transfer station, she direct charges to, as opposed to indirect charges like there's an indirect charge from the transfer station to cover accountant expenses and treasurer expenses and so on.
So, so the, the $22.70 times 20 hours times 52 weeks, and it's probably off a little bit, right? Is $23,680.
Correct.
The budget for Admin Assistant at Highway is $23,698.
But that was for, that was for 25 hours, not 20?
Because it wasn't at $22.70 an hour?
May I add something?
Now they're, now they're going for that.
The budget went from, when this person was hired on, I remember the PCF, because we had looked at it at 1781 at the hire, and it said, if anything higher than that, it's not in the budget for 2021. And at some point, we ended up with 1816, which is on this other form that's been crossed off and put at 2270.
Is when I...
Quietly at 1816.
When I hired Robin, I was under the impression that there was a limitation due to the line item. When you guys were recommended, recommending the raise, you based it on the Jacob Study, which at that time, the Assistant to the Highway Superintendent was a Grade 5. It's since been reclassified to a Grade 8, and the candidate has 17 years' experience. It still falls within the Jacob Study, and depending on which one you're using, there's, there was also a grades that the PQB put out, and it falls within those guidelines as well.
I'm a little confused. We've got here in the package, we have the non-exempt wage scale from 417. Scale that they've been using, I'm not even gonna look at 22 yet.
Yeah.
So this is the one they've been using. Thing here says, the PCF says it's a Grade 8, going to a Grade 8, so staying a Grade 8. But that's one thing, I just, just a comment for PQB features. I really would like to see grades and steps. It makes no sense to have only grades on these things without a step. That's the, why we have steps. Half of these forms are not filled out with steps.
From, from my perspective, I'd like to know...
I'm not criticizing you, that was just a general...
But I'd like to know which, which study we're going by, like which, it's, it's very confusing.
I'm working off this exempt wage scale thingy that's in our package that shows a Grade 8...
Is she non-exempt or exempt?
Non-exempt.
Non-exempt. So grade...
A Grade 8. I'm trying to find even the 1781 that we agreed to on the earlier PCF. The only place I find that on this scale is a Grade... Grade 5, Step 8 is 1741, so we're close, right there. If you go to a Grade 8, coming up to the 1781, you're down to a, a Grade 8 Step 6.
Yes.
So none of this is making any clear sense here.
Well, you're within, you're within, within a step.
If she went from a 5 grade is what you're saying, to an 8, right? That's, just got reclassified?
She went from a Grade 5 to a Grade 8.
Grade 5 to a Grade 8.
What step? Do you know?
We, this is all new to me. I wasn't aware of this document until we started getting into this.
If you look at the, if you look at the step scale, a 1741 is the closest thing to the 1781.
The Waging Classification Plan has been suspended.
And that's a Grade 5.
Yeah, they, yeah. Personal Policies Procedure Board, this is why we have a grant to look at a regional sort of HR thing.
Everything all over.
But from my standpoint, it sounds to me like, originally the plan was that X amount of money was gonna be taken 20 hours a week out of the Assistant Highway Superintendent Line. Then there'd be additional five hours taken out of the Transfer Enterprise Fund. By mistake, 25 hours were assigned to the Assistant Superintendent, Highway Department General Fund, which then offset the amounts so that it raised up, when you add an additional five hours from Transfer, she's getting an extra five hours every week because of a mistake that was made.
Not five hours, but it is, it is a wage increase, and I would call, I would, I would frame it as an adjustment because you're going from a Grade 5 to a Grade 8. This particular individual has 17 years of municipal experience.
Right, I'm just talking again about the process. The process was based on a mistake that the funds were allocated, all 25 hours of them from one, so then you end up getting an additional five hours from Transfer in addition to the 25. So it's like she's getting 30 hours worth of work. If it was based on a...
25, but getting...
Yeah, if it was based on a process that was, it sounds to me like it was based on a mistake, and I'm wondering why we didn't just fix the mistake?
Yeah, I mean...
Because we didn't catch the mistake.
So now we're justifying the increase based on a mistake that was made. She's getting an additional five hours from Transfer in addition to what would have been 20 hours. She's getting 25 hours worth of...
I don't see it as an extra five hours, because she's still only working 25 hours a week.
No, but she's getting access to an extra five hours per week of salary.
Of funding.
Of wages.
Funding.
A salary adjustment to try and bring her up to...
No, that's not the way it happened.
Just because there's extra money in the budget, if it's due to an error, we don't perpetuate the error, we fix the error, don't we?
I, I don't know.
If I got, if I got extra money in my bank account from the IRS, I'm not gonna spend it, I'm gonna probably have to pay it back, no? I mean, we, we can't make transfers now that the budget has been done.
We're just gonna call the access in that line item free cash?
Well, I don't know, but I think we could put a cap on how much could be spent for that. If we agreed on 1861 at some point, or whatever that was, can you read it, 1816? If that was what the, the 2%, I don't even know what the math is here. The 1781 to 1816 is what percent? Is that our 2%? 4%?
2%.
2%?
It was the 1816 that was
That's 2%.
used at the Select Board meeting.
And basically, all these others were at a 4%?
But they were, they were at the original classification. It's been reclassified. The job description was updated?
Alright.
But it was still a Grade 8?
It was reclassified after...
Yeah, but I'm just saying that the, the amount of money that is on this PCF is based on an error that happened in the allocation of the pay to, to one account instead of two. So the extra five hours from the Enterprise Fund is now added to her wage line, and that's what we're being asked to approve after we already approved an 1816 hourly rate. So we're being asked to approve this based on an error that was made.
So perpetuate...
And it's not because PQB rescored, it's not because of this, it's not because of that. It's because there was an error that was made in the allocating of five hours. So she's getting an additional five hours worth of pay.
Right, but I, I think it's justified. I, I wrote to you guys back in the budget process how I thought that, that position was under, underscored and under...
Then you went to PQB and you got it rescored, and they relooked at it, but what we're looking at now is not that.
And the wage didn't change.
Why?
Great question.
Did PQB rescore it?
Yes, but you, we still had a lot, an existing line item in the budget that couldn't just be added to. I think now we have an opportunity to bring that, this position up. It's, it was part of a voted balanced budget.
It was based on a mistake, Randall.
But, a mistake in a balanced budget.
My other point to all of this is, just because there's money in the budget, doesn't mean we have to spend it. I mean, we do it every year. If you look at the expense reports that we have, and we have some money left over, that's how we...
We just transferred over a ton of police wages to help cover for street lighting. Like, just because it's there doesn't mean...
I'm just trying to get people to step.
Yeah.
I, I would argue that when we lose people, you're not only losing the person, you're losing institutional knowledge, and it may cost you more in the long run for, for whatever you think you're gonna save.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Yep.
So, the... Reading this form for the first time, present status shows a step, a Grade 8, I'm assuming. So she's in the, this person's in the Grade 8 category. And they, they, prior to June 30th, they were making $17.81 an hour. Is that correct?
Uh, that sounds right.
Okay. Then we go through the PQB process. On 6/24, it looks like the Town Accountant, Randall, signed off. Well, I guess I'm more interested on July 1st.
That was the PQB meeting.
What did PQB sign off on? Did they sign, who scratched out the $18.16?
I did, because we talked about it at the meeting. I filled out an additional form, there should be two copies there. One was signed at the meeting. PQB asked me to fill out another form, and then I got the accountant to sign off on it again, and the PQB chair.
You know, I, I have another form that doesn't look like this, but it, it looks like a scorecard. But it's hard to read.
Well, there were two that came to you, I have both copies right here.
Yeah, the scoring sheet.
I mean, they both say the same thing. It's just PQB wanted to go back to the Town Accountant because it was a different number than she originally signed.
Yes. I think we have to understand what, what wage thing they're even trying to use then. Because if this is still a grade, if this went from a 5 to an 8, and what we have is the wage scale from 17, the non-exempt, if that's what's being used, none of these figures jive.
So I...
It wouldn't jive, because everything that was done for the budget was done on a percentage from existing.
It doesn't necessarily match the step.
No.
Doesn't match the step, because we've never followed the steps.
I understand it doesn't match the step, but if a Grade 5 was 1741, for example, a 5/8, where they go on getting up to a Grade 8, 8 what? Is where, you know, we don't have that clarity, because 2270 is not on this either. A Grade 8 Step 11 is 2266.
So it would be within Step 11? Because presumably Step 11 goes from 2266 to 2375.
I don't see a Grade 11.
No.
Um, Step 11.
Step 11.
Grade 8 Step 11.
Can I just ask this question?
Sure.
If this mistake hadn't been made?
Right.
Would you be here advocating for 2270 an hour?
No, because there wouldn't be enough in the line item.
Okay, but it was a mistake, and it shouldn't have been there. I mean, if every, it, it was, I, I have no other nothing else to say about it. I mean, just because it was...
So if we take the, if we take the $18.16 and multiply by 20 and multiply by 52 weeks?
Step 2.2.
Yeah, that's the number that should have been in the budget. But the entire 25 hours made in that line item. In addition, five hours at $18.16 made in the transfer station.
Right, yes.
Sound about right? Okay.
That's obvious.
But at the same, while all this is going on, what's the timeline as far as updating the job description recently? Is this all happening simultaneously?
The position was open for six months while I was trying to get it reclassified and get more money for the position.
So my, my question is though, had, had the regrade already occurred prior to June 24?
I think so. Does that, that score sheet have a date on it?
It, it should.
Can you read them?
It doesn't.
April 1st, 2021?
Yeah, it says score 4/1/21. April 1st.
Okay.
Which makes it the Grade 8?
Yeah.
Okay.
But still, I think it's not helpful to have just Grade 8 without clarifying the step on anything.
When nothing matches.
Well...
And you can't, you can't...
It wouldn't, they, they wouldn't have a step because the position was open, so they can't recommend a step. They're only recommending a grade.
It would normally go from somebody's grade and step, and when you convert to a new grade, you go to the, the next comparable place that is, at the new grade, and maybe you pop up one step. That's it.
Yeah.
You don't pop up three or four steps.
You don't come up with an inadvertent number just off the charts.
I went from a person who had, she was here for three or four years, the person was 17 years. And because there was no increase, or there was a 2% increase in the line item, I'm, I'm forced to hire them at that limitation even though they have 13 more years' experience? That just, that makes no sense, the way we hire people.
So why wasn't that adjusted by PQB? That, why wasn't, there was a recommendation in terms of, when it was rescored, when it was relooked at? Why wasn't that considered?
Because we don't increase line items like that. When have we ever increased a line item for a wage without doing it at a town meeting or something?
But the positions are not scored on the individual, the positions are scored on the job description.
The job, the complexity of the job.
The skills and the essential functions that the person has to...
And there's a range.
There's a range.
And it's within the range of both of those things.
Right.
Both of the studies, it's the, the suggested, the proposed range, proposed wage is within both of those.
What's this person's hire date?
As far as...
For this position?
For this position was, um... That's a good question.
Before or after, after April 1st?
It was after April 1st, because that was when I finally got the first PRF approved, even though the position was empty since January.
So I'll take a stab at a motion.
Okay.
We'll see. I guess I, I would, I would move for tonight to do this in two steps. The 1816 that's already been approved, but then send this back to Q, PQB on the same two-week timetable. Based on the circumstances that happened, this was scored, they were giving a grade but not a step. The employee had not been identified yet. Now, if they took into account that the employee has 17 years' experience, would there be a different recommendation within the steps? Whatever that number is. And then, does it fit, does not fit? They may come back and say, no, it's still 1816, based on their manual, but worst case, we do the, I mean, we do the 2%, worst case is, we know where the budget needs to be on, on the next...
I know, but we don't have this mistake next year, so how do you pay for it next year?
How do you continue it?
Yeah, I mean, if this was based on a mistake...
How do you compensate your employees to make them wanna stay? I, I don't know the answer to that question, but you've...
Because there's more money in this line item for this year because of an error than there will be for next year. Because next year, there'll be 20 hours in this line, not 25.
How are you funding the positions that you've given raises to next year?
We put the money in the budget based on a very thoughtful process that was not based on a mistake. It was based on adopting a chart and saying, these positions are way below this range, and these, the ones that are 0 to 10% are gonna get an extra 2% raise. And we raised everybody to the minimum wage. So it was a very thoughtful process where we didn't favor one employee over another. And people wanna keep talking about the Senior Senate Director, I just wanna say something about that. She was, has a bachelor's degree and has many years' experience, and she was completely off this chart. So it was intentional to bring her into that 0 to 10% range, where she was, three employees were off the charts entirely. So I'm, I just wanted to mention about that because there's no comparison. She was by far, even now, she's still the lowest paid department head. And I think that she deserves it, frankly. So I, I thought that what we tried to do this year was to put wages front burner and give people raises above the 2%. And, and it's just between, like, everyone's trying to sort of go at it different ways to get raises, and we're always in the position of like
Of course.
having the money, wanting to keep employees, trying to be fair, trying to be, have parity, and it makes it very difficult.
To me, I mean, and maybe this is, you know, as we look at how we do our HR going forward here with this grant that we have to look at regional HR services or whatever, but any, any personnel system I've ever been involved in on a government level has graded people according to the kinds of jobs that they do. So you'd have, I don't know, you'd, you'd have department heads as, as a group. And yes, there's technical differences and, you know, you, you make adjustments for there. But you've got, you know, you've got your admin assistant types all as a group, and you've got another group of whomever. You know, you've got people that have got the basic minimum skills that are required to do, say, the admin assistant job. And that can vary, so they're all within, say, a grade whatever, grade seven and eight, say, usually two grades. So you've got a chance for them to move up. They can see that there's some future. If they stay long enough, they can hopefully have a, a grade increase, not just a step increase. But the, the actual amount that an assistant in one department gets to another should be, you know, based on their level of experience and technical expertise, et cetera, et cetera. But I mean, where we've been trying to compare and get people on an equitable basis, if we look at the other admin assistants, I didn't have time to do this, but to look at the other admin assistants, how this compares with the others that we have in Town Hall, I'm not, I'm not seeing why there would be any greater technical ability for somebody at the Highway Department that there is at the Treasurer's Office or somewhere else, or at the...
An assistant position on admin assistant.
I mean, so they, they should all be within the same range. And to my knowledge, nobody's more than around a 19-ish, maybe $20. And to my knowledge, nobody's more than around a 19-ish, maybe $20.
With how many years' experience?
I don't know, without looking at their backgrounds.
I guarantee that that matters.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to actually approve it at the 1816 for now and to bring it back to Personnel Committee to ask what level they were put at, has this been relooked at since, you know, since as a candidate in the position, based on experience and all of that? So I don't think we have a second for that motion.
No, not yet. And I think, you know, too, I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
But I just want to make my point, though. I think the admin assistant types, for example, as a category of employee, most personnel systems are divided by categories of people, right?
Yeah, right, right.
And we've got a wide range here. I mean, we may have the 19 or the 20 at the top. We've got other people that do have experience that are even less, they're $15 or $16 an hour, that have lots and lots of experience too.
I'm just intimately aware how much work we have at the highway department and how much this person has to keep on top of.
Yeah.
And...
Well, I'll tell you right now, because, and I only know it because I was at the Board of Assessors meeting last night. We have the admin assistant, now that we just moved up tonight, for $15.90. And that's an upswing, who's going to be carrying that department until, until we find an assessor to come in. I mean, that's a heck of a lot of responsibility, and she's got a ton of experience, too. So when we look at a 1590 position and a 22.70 position, which is some 25, 27% increase, I have a real problem with that being equitable. I mean, I'm fine with 1816, but to start with and go to the second.
I would love to talk to you guys at length about what the responsibilities of that position are, and I welcome any time you want to visit.
And I will, I will back you up, too, with the Board of Assessors' responsibilities for setting the tax rate in town and doing all that has to do to, so.
Yep, with a lot of experience in municipal governments.
Let's continue with the motion.
Would somebody like to second the motion?
All right.
Okay, so are you clear, did I represent what your motion was?
Please. Clarify it again.
All right.
No, no. Go for it.
All right. Do you want me to repeat it? Do you want John to repeat it? Yeah, John, why don't you repeat it?
That we approve the 1816 tonight and refer it back to the PQB for action within two weeks to come back on our schedule. For them to specifically review the scoring that was done on April 1st, apply that to the employee that was onboarded after that, and taking into consideration the representation of their 17 years of service.
Mm-hmm.
What step would they recommend that be in?
Mm-hmm.
And then, based on that, is there an additional recommendation from PQB back to us?
Thank you very much. As opposed to it being based on an error that was made to get to where it would increase. So, any further comments? Ed?
Technically, I don't think you can approve $18.16 because what you have in front of you is 2270. I think you can not approve it, but make a recommendation that it's $18.16.
Okay.
I thought I heard that Randall was the one that crossed it off after it came out of the PQB.
At the PQB.
He did it at...
Following the discussion.
Oh, at there, during the meeting.
Yes.
Prior to the vote.
Correct.
Okay, well, then we, yeah.
After the recommendation of the PQB chair.
So no, so then no increase for the next two weeks. Send it back to PQB to do everything that we just said to come back.
Okay. Do you want to pass on this and send it back to PQB, or do you want to take a vote on approving it or not approving it?
Wait, no, the motion is to defer for two weeks to send back for them to do all that stuff.
With the recommendation of 1816?
Okay.
And have it back on...
Then we'll still have this discussion.
And have it on our agenda in two weeks.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Randall.
Thanks for your consideration.
I think we have to go back to the fire chief. Did you get the answer you were looking for on the budget for the EMD?
Yeah, I was shown the other line item where it is, so I'm...
Okay. So we have two PCFs for John Workman, and one of them is the retro, and the other one is the FY22, based on the adding of the EMD, and you saw it in the budget, $6,000 elsewhere. Do we have a motion to approve those? So move. Francine and John, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're up to the licenses and permits. We have two to approve. I have a question. So this is when they, the Park Commission is the one that actually approves the using of the Conant Park for various things, and there's a lot of paperwork that has to be filled out with ed and a fee charge. My question is, why does the Southampton, Celebrate Southampton have to pay to use Conant Park?
Generosity to the town.
Kami Walunas, 298 College Highway, Southampton Historical Society president. We do not have to actually pay for the pavilion.
Mm-hmm.
We do have to put the security deposit down if something happens there. They keep that. We have been doing the license to cover our butt.
Okay.
Um, I don't know who's going to come that Friday night to the band and bring wine with them.
Yeah, right.
I want to make sure that I'm covered. So we did, we did this two years ago, too.
Okay.
And...
All I saw was a check number on it, and I didn't know what it was for.
So we, we pay, I gave them checks and everything, and they shred them up and they kept the 50, and now I'm going on to the permits.
Okay, good. All right, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we would not have the check number for their payment to, for the pavilion. It would not be part of our, part of our application paperwork.
So the check number on there is for the alcohol permit?
Is, is...
Oh, okay.
$45.
Okay, good. Thanks, Sammy. Okay, so we have two requests. The first one is Kathleen Haley, Sunday, August 8th, and it looks like all the paperwork's complete, all the forms, the check, the hold harmless, everything is complete on that one. That is a party. And then the next one is the Southampton Historical Society, Celebrate Southampton. Please make sure you all come, August 13th and 14th, Friday and Saturday. And that is, looks like that's all complete also.
All the paperwork is complete.
I did have one question.
Sure.
Source of alcohol for Celebrate Southampton?
It's BYOB.
Okay.
That's why that's, yeah, there is no source.
Can we take them separately?
Oh, we on there?
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve Kathleen Haley's rental of the pavilion for Conant Park?
So move.
I'll second it. All right, John and Chris, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the Celebrate Southampton.
I make, I make a motion to accept and, based on the application, waive the permit fee.
Oh, so that's your motion for that? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Can we waive the fee for the Park Commission?
They already did.
They did.
The only, the only check is, I'm only, I'm only waiving the select board fee.
It's for the other thing. Okay, we're good then. All right, fine.
We're waiving, John?
Yeah.
It does, good.
Thanks for your help, everybody.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be the filthy ogre. Why would we waive a fee to an outside agency, number one? Number two is, you know, I've also raised the question of why they don't have to pay an entertainment fee because they're an outside agency.
They're a town...
For the greater...
They're not a town group. It's the Southampton Historical Society.
They're a separate nonprofit.
They're separate. I'm sorry. Just my opinion.
The entertainment one is on under, it's the free concerts, they're the ones that booked.
It's the cultural series, no?
Thank you. They're the ones that have, that booked the...
Culture recreation.
The amphitheater on Friday.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming they have the entertainment license.
It's under the cultural...
Please, oh, bring that up. Because my comment will be the same. There are no entertainment licenses for those concerts.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We are able to waive the fee as the select board?
Well, we'll actually have to reimburse the fee because it's already been deposited.
I see.
And then I got to figure out how to undo and reimburse the fee from fiscal year '21 and '22.
Don't have that. It's too much work, $45 deserves to be paid.
But that's for this year, though. It's this year's revenue. It shouldn't be in last year's revenues.
I appreciate it.
I'll give you a donation.
Who will make a donation?
I will draw the wave.
Okay, so your, your motion will be to approve it as is, and you want to second it as is? Sure, as is. And we'll, we'll make a donation to support your...
$10 a piece, you'll make out $5 ahead.
I agree with you.
All in favor?
Neither is.
Aye. Okay, now we're ready to talk about the warrants. Chris, you want to talk about them? So Chris reads off the warrants as they show up here, but there's very much detail that we get, so if you have any questions about any of the payouts, please feel free to ask. It's, it's detail that we get, but Chris only will report on the actual total.
Total, yep. Okay, so we have warrant W2153, which is a vendor payable warrant. It was dated on June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $238,466.91. That's the only one for this meeting.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, Chris. And next is municipal hearing officer contract, City of Northampton. So Chief Workman, fire chief, brought to our attention the need to engage with City of Northampton so that there is a hearing officer that allows for, what's the word I'm looking for?
Violation.
Violations to be addressed more or less by a sort of a outside group relative to violations in the, breaking any sort of fire codes or things like that. And so we voted to approve that. There was a draft from the City of Northampton. KP Law looked at it, made some recommendations. We have a clean copy of their recommendations, so we have to vote to approve that contract. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Sounds like it.
And in your packets, you actually, you have two versions of it. KP Law, as they reviewed it for form, made some strongly recommended edits to Northampton's contract.
Mm-hmm.
Those edits are reflected in the clean copy that you have in front of you. There's two ways you can proceed with this. Is we could not approve it as written and sign it, and send the recommended edits that KP Law made it to Northampton and say, these edits are the recommendations of our town council. Do you accept them? Or we can approve it as it is edited, sign it, and also send it to Northampton signed and say, and this is, here's the signed contract back, however, it does include these edits which were made by our town council when they reviewed it as to form.
Okay, and you have a preference?
The second way.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to that, John?
Yeah, I move that we send the contract with the edits from KP Law to Northampton.
Do you second? She wants to send the edits by KP Law to Northampton.
Send the twin copy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Has it signed?
Signed.
Yeah.
Yes, executed copy.
Okay, I'll second it.
Well, would that include the payment? So are we, we're approving, we're signing, we're sending the check?
Yes.
If you cash the check, we're good to go.
Mm-hmm. We'll have to get a copy, but now, does Chief Workman have, does he have a copy of this new copy?
No, he does not. I will, I will send it.
Okay. Okay, motion, did you second that? Mm-hmm. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, I think we're up to minutes. We have May 12th, June 1st, and that's it. And is it Judy that's doing minutes, or is, are we still...
It's Kathy.
It's Kathy. Okay, good. So Kathy Ingram is our minute taker, and she watches the video and records the minutes, does a very detailed job, by the way.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 12th, 2021. You want to second that, anybody? Like to second them? How about you, Francine, would you like to second them? Any edits?
Very thorough, as usual.
Which day is this? May 12th?
May 12th, yep. Anybody see anything that needs correction or a question?
Didn't have the May 12th on myself.
For May 12th, there's just one minor correction under, on page two, top of page two, in the paragraph that begins with Miss Fowles reported that conservation meant briefly "to" on Monday. I think that's supposed to be like two, two Os, two.
This is on page two in...
Top paragraph.
Yep.
Beginning with Miss Fowles.
Yep.
Reported that conservation meant briefly "to" on Monday.
Oh, okay.
Briefly on Monday. Okay.
So you want it to say TOO?
Yes. I know, I'm sorry.
Okay. Or cross out the two, one of the other.
Yeah, cross out the two.
Yeah. Get to that, good, good.
Which is your preference?
You pick.
Okay.
Yeah.
Adding the O is probably easier, easier.
Probably easier, yes.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I need you on the Grants Committee, Joy, just so you know.
So I'll move with that to accept the minutes of May 12th, given that correction.
Edit, okay. Good. I'll second it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's look at June...
I'm staying.
Okay.
Aye.
Let's look at June 1st.
There was one correction that I noticed on there, in the open time for the public.[1766.52] The open time for the public, the second bullet point, Nilda Cohen... Oh, this is page five.
Page five, hang on. Open time for the public, yep. Nilda Cohen joined...
Nilda Cohen joined the meeting and made a state... It's supposed to be a statement regarding it.
Statement, right. Yep.
And also, in the last sentence of the same place, Ms. Flood responded "they," if they, so one "they" goes away, or responded "that."
Yeah.
Ms. Flood responded "that" if they offer the service.
Yeah. Yeah, that should be "that." Okay.
Just very first page on Pledge of Allegiance. The last line of that section is just one document without an S on documents.
I know, it even says "one."
But documents is plural.
I know.
Yeah, okay. And then, I just had a question, I guess...
Cross off the S?
Yeah.
Document?
Yeah, one document. Just a question on the warrant, and I don't know why. The warrant section was W-2147, and it just said zero. Was that... Should that even be on there? I guess is the question.
Hmm, that's interesting.
It was on the agenda, so... Yeah, it was on the agenda. I had filled in the dollar amount at that point in time because I didn't get it back, so I'll figure out. It probably should just be crossed off.
That's, I think, all I saw.
Okay, can I have a motion then to approve the minutes for June 1st with those corrections?
So move.
I'll second it. Any further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. John abstained from the approval of all of those. Pending items, Ed, we have to make sure that the Green Community grant... I know that it's been a busy stretch with all the election and town meeting, but we got $130-something thousand grant, and we have to show savings before we're able to actually access those funds. And I think we were realizing big savings in LED lighting at Norris was one of the biggest chunks of savings. Where are we with that, Ed?
I think we've got proposals for... Or a proposal for this building other than the extra insulation we wanted to add into, but I will go back and check with the ever-source contractor that did the audit on where those are.
Okay, and we don't want to lose any of this money, so is there a deadline for submitting these, you know, saving actions?
No, there isn't, but if we can get moving on them, we're better off.
Yeah, it definitely should be picked back up again. The Charter Building, there's a building that Charter owns on the Highway Department property, and they don't pay rent, and we've tried to find out, like, what's the contract with that? And, you know, we talked about putting a truck up against the door or whatever. We're not getting a lot of information back from Charter relative to that, so that's still a sort of a pending item. And then, the Clearwater Woodland Boundary, there, the Eagle Club has a fence up that's on the town property, and we wanted to have that be looked at and sort of fixed. Is there anything on either of those items?
I have not had a chance to go back and do the research on who did that survey, so I can go back and find out how much it would cost to go out and further mark that off.
Okay. Back on the Charter Building one, you know, I know you made some presentation or comments at one of the select board meetings. You'd contacted the Charter rep...
Yeah.
About our service in town and so forth, and there still seems to be a fair number of people worried about this. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be wise to actually have the Charter rep come in and talk to us?
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. But I also think I suggested that the tech committee reach out to Charter.
They have to look at our different tier structures of our communications plan, but they haven't...
I think a joint meeting with the tech committee and Charter would be a great idea. There's a lot of... We get probably more communications by unhappy townspeople about internet service and trees than anything that we get. So I think that'd be a really good idea.
Okay, I can see about that.
Okay.
Okay. I think it'd be good just to have a person to talk to and hear that. Because I know a couple folks on the tech committee have been in touch with Charter to take a look at our current Charter system and, you know, raising us up another tier here at Town Hall, but that doesn't...
Right.
Do you think we could get someone higher up on the chain there rather than just the customer representative coming in? Because they're not going to effectuate any change. I'm not even sure someone higher will, but I think we might...
It's not a customer representative, that's their government representative.
Well...
And I still have... I got to go back and take a look at our contract because I would think that there's a clause in there, or I would hope there's a clause in there, that they're supposed to come in like once a year or whatever anyway, so to give a report.
If you can...
Let me check on that.
Share that contact information with the tech committee and see what we can do about both of those issues, really, the building and...
Yep. So what do we really want to do with the building? We want to just get rid of it? We want to get it out of there?
Well, I think the issue probably came when... I'm pretty sure they got everything out of there now, but we were... They were asking if we wanted the building, or they wanted... We wanted them to tear it down, and I think the issue started coming up when Randall said, "Well, you know, it's not going to cost us anything, why don't we keep it?" But then, they were talking about, you know, all kinds of agreements and whatever on leaving the building there. So let me see what I can find out and reach back to the person I was dealing with with that.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, the doers one is the one that I just don't want to leave any money on the table. We're going to designate a Green Community. We need to really do the energy upgrades and realize the money for it.
Doers, D-O-E-R, rather than D-E-W-A-R.
Yeah, not doers.
Sorry, could not resist.
Oh, God.
It's 10 o'clock. Our next meeting is the 27th. We would normally just do every other week. People want to just go with those August dates?
Yeah.
Okay. That would make it...
August 10th.
August 10th, and two weeks later would be the 24th. 10 and 24. Okay, open time for the public. The select board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment and encourages participation. Would anybody from the public like to speak?
Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. Again, as the Southampton Historical Society president, Clark Chapman House is still closed. There is a huge hole from our septic system falling in, so please don't go on the property. They do have Concom? Who's... Somebody's going in there to try to remove the invasive...
That should have been maybe even yesterday.
I think it was yesterday that they went in.
Concom had a bunch of volunteers that were supposed to go in and help cut down a whole bunch of the invasive weeds in the background.
Yeah, so they're okay because they've been approved to be there, but otherwise, the place is closed. There should be no people there. We are going to have some new contractors come in, though, in August, but I just want to make the public aware that Clark Chapman is closed.
Are you still having people that go on the premises?
We see... Well, people walking by, and you can kind of see them start to come in, and then they'll see that where somebody's there.
Why don't we put a "closed" sign on the lamp pole right outside at the end of the driveway?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Closed until further notice.
Yeah, between that and the man-man trail, it's like danger.
And then, the other thing is Celebrate Southampton, August 13th and 14th. We are still looking for a couple performers if they would like to come in, sing, play instruments or whatever, and we're still going around collecting raffle items. We've got some really nice stuff in already, so that will be helpful for next year's because all that money that we raise on that will go towards next year's.
Me.
Celebrate.
Wonderful.
So that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to say thank you. I just came to see what goes on in town. I had been working for a company up until last spring, I guess. Got laid off, and... Which was okay because I was well beyond retirement time. And I just thought... My wife is always pushing me, you know, find out a little more about what's going on.
So glad you came. Can you just repeat your name again and where you live?
John Perizzella. I'm on Gilbert Road.
Oh, great.
The house, the property we have, my in-law's built here back in the '70s.
Oh, wonderful.
And so, my wife was able to get the property when it passed on, and I've been there for quite a while, and we enjoy the town. I wanted to find out a little more about what's going on. In fact, I don't know if you got my last call about the stamps?
Oh, that's why the name is so familiar, yes.
I've got that pile of stamps, so I'll get in touch with you.
Well, thank you very much for coming, and, you know, we have so many great committees in town. You know, we have a volunteer who is a retired engineer who's in our building.
I expected there'd be people here.
Well, you know, they... We always have our... We have our loyal Tammy here, but we often do have a few more people. This is only our second meeting back in person, so we have been pretty much up to...
There are more people just like, you know, just to kind of sit and listen.
Yeah, we usually have a little bit more.
Yeah, that's what I was expecting. I was surprised.
And, of course, it's on TV, so you're on TV in case you didn't know it.
Oh, I didn't know, yeah.
But anyway, thank you very much for joining and...
I appreciate it.
And if you're interested in any volunteering, we can give you a list of ideas. You said you were an engineer, is that what I heard?
I used to be.
Yeah?
I have a degree in engineering.
There we go.
I was in civil engineering. I worked as a rocket scientist.
Great.
A number of different things. Got into recruiting...
So you really are a rocket scientist.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for coming.
The only correspondence that we got, recent letter about a tree that's on the conservation property of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and Ed referred them to the proper person to do that. I think that's the only other correspondence. So then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So move.
Yep, I'll second that.
All right, John and then Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
You may stay here.
Yeah, you may stay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got a bunch of papers for you to sign, ready?